Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30, so I'll call our meeting to order, October 3rd, 2024. And first of all, before I even get to the roll, nice full room. It's always nice to see that. So thank you all for coming out and hope you all have a chance to speak if you have things to say this evening. So we'll begin with the roll call. John, myself, present. Sue?
Here.
Phil?
Present.
Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Yep.
Mark is excused, and we'll get to that in a moment. Matt?
Present.
And alternates. Zach is not present. Michael?
Present.
Brad?
Yep.
Molly?
Present.
And Jason?
Here.
All right. So I suppose we can talk about this more when we get to the communications received. But we did hear, got a communication from Mark Sturgeon about his appointment and resigning from the board, which we'll talk about in a moment. Before then, though, review of minutes. It's up next from our September 19th meeting. And so hopefully you all have a copy and we can take a look.
The only thing I saw was on page two in that first paragraph. I think it should be January 2025. Is that when that expired, not '24?
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense for the Mountain Village.
Mountain Village, right.
Thank you.
Yes, exactly.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the edits as noted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes with the edits?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentions? Okay, so the minutes are approved from September 19th. Excuse me. Before we move on, actually, it's one of the things in the minutes that's worth us, a reminder, is please, everyone on the board and in the public, if you'd like to come, we have a site visit on October 17th at 5:30 on Beach Hill Road for one of our site plans that we're currently looking at. And so, yeah, so it's not officially a public hearing, but it will be an opportunity to look around and ask questions and anything else that comes up. All right. Are there any public comments not related to items on the agenda? All right then. Communications received.
Joseph? Yeah, several communications received. The first one, John, you mentioned, Mark Sturgeon did state that he is resigning from the planning board as a full member, which he has, he's been a full member on the board for a number of years, but he has announced his resignation. We have a, several letters on the site plan review application, which I'll put in the file for this upcoming meeting. And then we have a letter with regards to zoning, agricultural zoning, which is received via email and is on the, on the sort of end of the stack of paper. We also have a piece of information that I think might fit under other business, but it has to do with the brownfields program by Lakes Region Planning Commission. So I do also have a sort of flyer, piece of information about that, and we can maybe discuss that, go over that a little more later. But that is also potentially of interest, and that's the other piece of paper up, up on the table.
Yeah, so I think the brownfields, it relates to the LRPC, so when we do committees, we can talk more about that. And, yeah, Mark has missed a bunch of meetings lately, and he has a very busy schedule. And we were talking about ways of making it work, but eventually he just decided that it would be better to resign, so someone else could, better use that spot, I suppose, because he was having a hard time.
That does give us the question, and I don't think we have to answer that tonight necessarily,
but the question would be, do we want to, until the next round of appointments in the spring, just use alternates? We have plenty of alternates. Or do we want to seek a new full member at this point, maybe not tonight, but like next month or something, before the next round of appointments in the spring? Again, I don't think we have to answer that tonight, but I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about that preliminarily.
I don't have any thoughts on it.
Either way, I think we got a good number of alternates now, though we can certainly allow a meeting.
Yeah.
Speaking of which, actually, as the ranking alternate, Sir Michael, I will allow you to be a, or appoint you as a, I'm missing the word right now. What's that?
Voting member.
Yes, exactly.
CEO.
CEO as a voting member this evening, thank you. The word was slipping me for some reason.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
And as you, you know, sort of as, on that note of, you know, if the board were to recommend a new full member be appointed, the process the select board has asked that folks discuss that with the board, and then that the board provide a, some kind of comment to the select board, and then the applicant would also provide a letter to the select board asking for appointment as a full member. They would then, you know, decide on that at their meeting.
I guess this is a question we might ask now. Maybe not an official motion even, just an open question. Do we want to encourage some of our alternates right now, for example, to seek full membership? Or do we want to just kick that off until the spring when the standard kind of procedure goes into place?
Michael, are you, as the ranking alternate, are you interested in?
I am.
I think it's kind of up to the alternate to decide whether they want to step up or not do it.
Yeah, I would think it shouldn't be delayed if there is an alternate.
All right.
One thing that does confuse me, though, is we make those recommendations to the select board, but we've made recommendations in the past recently that haven't bared any weight on the select board, and they proceeded not only with their own decisions, but with their own decisions against the likes of some of their own select members. So why are we even doing this process is my question, actually.
It's their call, honestly.
They don't even pay attention to it.
They ask for our feedback, but we don't have to give it, and they don't have to heed it.
Okay.
The responsibility sits solely with them.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, I'll add a little bit.
I would, I would recommend that we not provide feedback to the select board and encourage any member who is interested in applying for the open seat to submit a letter to the select board.
Well, they have asked for this process.
Yeah, I don't like, I'm not in the position, I don't want to be in the position of recommending it. Anyone here, I think it should be up to individuals to apply.
I mean, there is a couple of pieces, a kind of background here. A, as you said, it is ultimately a select board decision.
It is.
And they asked for our input. And I think part of this as well is, it often happened that if someone applied to the select board, they often didn't have a lot to go on, and they would simply have an up or down vote with not a lot of information to go on.
Okay.
And so they wanted more feedback, and there have been instances in which there were openings and alternates already on, and it would be nice to have alternates considered as well in the process before immediately got put to someone else who may have applied.
Like me.
In fact, like you. And no offense to you being on the board.
No, not that.
But in terms of procedure, it would have been nice to also consider some of the alternates who are already kind of in the wings.
Yeah, I think it blindsided a lot of people, and I didn't even realize what that was doing either.
No, I don't, I don't think you intended anything there.
No, yeah.
As a process, though, it allows for some of that reflection before it gets to the select board. Sit down, just see a letter and say, yes.
Okay.
Yeah?
I'd say, at the bare minimum, the board ought to at least chime in to the select board and say, we'd at least like a full member appointed till the March term. I think that would be a bare minimum.
Yeah.
And then let whoever, and to, as far as Matt, Matt had put a ton of time into the housing committee, drove to Concord for meetings, and was very well-versed in the planning board, and actually was in attendance for many of the meetings for a year or more leading up to being appointed as a full member of the.
And I.
Thank you.
I don't mean this in any way to disparage Matt.
Oh, no, I'm not saying you were.
It's more just about the procedure, and it's, it.
I'm more probably supporting the select board's decision.
Okay.
When they appointed Matt, because it made a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think we did learn a lot, yeah. Thank you.
All right, so.
Neil, do you want to say anything on behalf of the select board?
Oh, I think if you're. Since you're here. If any alternate member is interested, they should throw their hat in the ring.
I agree.
Yeah. And then we can talk about it, and then go to the select board and, yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't hesitate to recommend any of the alternates who are sitting on the board currently.
I mean, but, you know, I'm not sure that.
Well, we'll see who's interested and make a decision.
Right. I just, yeah, I find that, I find this process to be imperfect.
It is an imperfect process, and we're working towards a less imperfect process.
Thank you.
So, reports of committees. CIP, anything going on?
Not yet. I put out an email the other day, and I think this, this week, they were meeting with the department heads on that. They sent out their sheet, and we should start meeting. I think it's the end of next week.
And so we have a large topic tonight, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. And so some of our larger expenditures and scheduling of that. All right.
I did run into Mike Currier today, and he expressed an interest to continue his involvement with the CIP committee, and so he asked that I just remind people, whoever has the email list for the, for the CIP, tell me that he continued to be notified.
Yeah, he is on the email list. Yep.
Energy or conservation?
No, nothing too?
The energy committee is continuing to meet. I think there's, on behalf of the energy committee, I can say, you know, progress on the solar, on the solar, what's that?
Commission.
Yes, energy, thank you, energy commission. Progress on the solar is coming along nicely. I'm not sure, you know, there was a little discussion of budgets for the, for the upcoming budget season, and I'm not sure that there was a resolution. You know, there was some inquiry about some energy efficiency-related projects, but, you know, I think we deferred them to other departments specifically.
All right. So Lakes Region Planning Commission, first of all, I want to say that I think many of us are very excited to have a new director, Shauna Saunders, who is a pretty amazing person, and she's already making some pretty positive changes in really kind of bringing a more traditional, but really helpful planning focus back to the LRPC and giving, trying to offer more planning assistance to communities, which has been a little lacking in some communities lately. And also starting up again a circuit rider program, so for towns that are lacking staff or whatever, there's someone there to step in and help out in those communities. So a lot of really good things are starting to happen.
What is the program?
Circuit Rider. Basically, one of their staff will go and help out, like if a planner, for example, for a town, like if Joseph happened to move on, and you're left without someone to fill that role, in the meantime, while you're looking for someone new, they can help step in and provide some assistance. And so they are, they seem to be much more on the ground helping communities out, even in the short, very short period of time since she's taken over as the director.
We used to use that service in the town, that I used to be on the planning board with. Like, we didn't have any staff around, so if somebody had a question during the week, like they could make an appointment with the circuit rider who would be in the town, and they could consult with them on any planning-related questions, kind of as an independent resource.
I wasn't even thinking about that, or smaller communities, they don't even have a staff planner.
Yeah, they don't have staff at all. So like, any questions, without a circuit rider, like the chair ends up responding to any questions like that, and it's a big burden for the, for the board members. So having the circuit rider staff as a point of contact is a really big asset for towns without staff.
That's great.
It is, it's a great service.
So Plymouth also had, you know, some frustrations in the past, so I think we're looking forward to this. Also notable for Plymouth, me and Bill, at this point, are both members of the executive board, so that's a, a good change, and have some more representation there. I'm an at-large member, and he is a regional member, our regional representative. At our last meeting this September, our last commissioner meeting, we had a presentation on brownfields, and they, the commission also seems really interested in getting more communities involved, and they focused on a few communities in the LRPC, including Franklin, who have been availing themselves of this, this resource. And I don't know, Joseph, I think you might have a little bit more to say about this.
Yeah, so Shauna, who you just mentioned, Executive Director of Lakes Region, reached out to Scott and myself about possibly having the town of Plymouth participate in the Lakes Region Planning Commission's Brownfields Assessment Program, which is a grant-funded program they use in partnership with the community, though LRPC administers and funds the project, to assess potential, potentially redevelopable, but also potentially contaminated town-owned lands. So their priorities really are on sites that may have some potential for redevelopment, and that could be a lot of different things. It could be commercial or residential redevelopment, but it could also be converting something into a park or community use. So LRPC had reached out and expressed some interest in possibly partnering with the town, and I would think as well, the planning board, and to a certain extent, on this program, to do a Phase One and Phase Two Brownfields Assessment. And the site that was floated was the old former Plymouth Inn site. Many members may be familiar. It is on Main Street, right kind of across from the pizza place, and it is next to the tree farm, where there's kind of an informal walkway that connects down to Main Street there, down the hill, what used to be Webster Street, going all the way through. So that site had, until 2001, a inn property that was deteriorating, and there was a pretty good likelihood that there were some building materials and other contaminants there. So this process would allow for that site to have a formal assessment done. First phase, Phase One, they do a desk assessment, so look through records, you know, historical files, anything they can. Phase Two is sort of their field assessment. It's more of a actual, you know, taking soil samples, and then they provide a report, which would, you know, these days, a Brownfields Assessment Report, they like to partner with maybe the planning board to look at not just what is the potential contamination, but what is the, the potential vision for what might be acceptable reuses of the site, which is why I think this is maybe relevant to the planning board, because if, it's such an important site, if that's something that the planning board were interested in or supportive of, there could definitely be an opportunity maybe for a charrette or some type of planning meeting to try and get some input about, you know, what the future may be of that property. You may also recognize it as the site where the, the big sign is about the infrastructure project. That's kind of the best landmark now. So it's not a huge site. There's not, you know, it's not like these old mill buildings in Franklin or other places. It's, but, you know, LRPC and Shauna have suggested that it may be a great candidate for this program. But, you know, with it being a sort of high-profile downtown site, I thought it was important to get some, some input from the planning board before anything was really formally initiated on that. So I'd really welcome any feedback if the board thinks that we'd like to move forward with that, or would be interested in maybe doing some, some planning in partnership with LRPC to think about potential future uses of that site, which, like I said, could be as big as finding commercial developers for it, or turning it into a formalized park, or any number of other, other possibilities.
How did I not know we have a tree farm in our downtown area?
The American chestnut, I believe.
Didn't realize that either. That's news to me.
The American chestnut.
Is it?
Yep.
It's a hybrid, but yes.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Next to the Minuteman Press is the other thing.
I can see it now.
But, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a highly visible site. You know, the planning board certainly talked about downtown, what type of growth and development makes sense downtown, so I would, I would certainly say it's an opportunity for us to have this work done, administered and funded by LRPC. It's a town-owned property, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's an opportunity for them to also have a project that they can really potentially highlight as, you know, here's an, here's how we're assisting, you know, communities in determining what contamination might exist and what might need to be done in the future.
And apparently we have some pretty decent documentation of some of the things that happened there.
There are a lot of photographs of the last year or year and a half of, of the building still being standing, and, yeah, it was in pretty deteriorated condition. Lots of, you know, building materials, certainly an older building, potentially lead paint, you know, fuel, some small, you know, residential-type fuel storage, possibly asbestos. Those kinds of sort of more standard contaminants that, I didn't think of this as, you know, when I think of brownfield, I think of an old factory, you know, something much larger. But really, it can include this type of site. This could very well have soil contamination, other things, you know. It wasn't, as I understand it, there wasn't a great deal of remediation done when the building came down. It just was taken down, and the site was, was ceded over. So this could be an opportunity to understand what's there.
I think it's a great opportunity. Sounds really interesting. Sounds like we could learn some really interesting things about the site and get some ideas about what we want to do with it. I think it's something we should go forward with.
I agree. If nothing else, it gives the town information about a property that, it's already owned by the town of Plymouth, so.
Yep.
If there's any liability there, we already have it.
That's true. Good to know that.
Are we all comfortable with potentially going forward with this?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
We have dealt with the Hitchner property for many, many, many years.
Finally found a way to, to deal with it, but this sounds like it would be more resources for a town to handle a project like that.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Wonderful. All right. Onto new business, discussion of potential zoning amendments for the 2025 town meeting. And I will say, in the last, what, a week or two, the BEA has published their calendar for town meeting and all the benchmarks for zoning, including the schedule for petition zoning amendments, if anybody has any of those in mind, but also when our deadlines are for having public hearings and all of that sort of stuff, has all been published by the BEA at this point. And I don't know if we want to get into the nitty-gritty of that probably, but it's there to give us guidance at this point, so.
Can I just borrow that for a minute?
Sure.
I'll make my own notes. I don't want to impede the agenda.
I'll get a copy in the next packet, too.
Yeah, this came up pretty recently. All right. So looking at our zoning amendments, we have a handful on the agenda tonight, and, excuse me, I'm just going to kind of look at them in the order they are on our packet here, which begins with the two HOP-derived amendments, and then goes on to others, including storage facilities, the ag zone, auto service stations, and so forth. So we had two that came out of the HOP program, the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant, that we were all, many of us involved in, in the past couple of years. And so one of them is probably the most complex on the agenda this evening, which is the Tenny Mountain Pud overlay. So for those in the audience, I, some of you may not be familiar with this work we've been looking at. This is a Tenny Mountain area, not Tenny Mountain Highway, but the actual ski resort mountain and surrounding area. And we're considering creating an overlay there that would allow for a planned unit development, which basically gives the developers some more flexibility in terms of what they can propose outside of our traditional zoning, but also means they have to come to us with a full master plan of what they want to develop on a particular site, which we can consider as a whole, rather than a bunch of individual pieces. And so what we need to consider is, if we do want to go forward with this, which could provide an interesting economic development opportunity, what kind of guidelines do we want to put in place for that process? And we talked about this once before, actually a couple times before, once before in great depth at our last, I think our last work session with Judy Barrett, who wrote most of the ordinance, and looked at quite a bit of detail about what this would entail. And I think from my recollection, there was some pretty broad support, but there was also some questions about height, density, maybe how we define village core. And I think a big sticking point for many people was, if we are going to allow some larger development, what kind of design guidelines would be in place? And would there potentially be, not just design guidelines, but architectural review? The same way we might send a application out for an engineering review, we might be able to send an application out for architectural review, see if it follows our guidelines, and if it really meets our vision of what we want in our town. That's my short introduction. I can say more, but I'd like to open it up for a moment. Actually, before we get too far, I think the board will discuss each of these amendments. I'll try to introduce each one. The board will discuss each one, and at some point in that process, I'll also open it up for you to give your, give your feedback, how you might feel about this, or questions you might have for us about this. I think one of the issues, we're looking at with height. And some of the individuals involved at Tenny Mountain thought 40 and 60 kind of whole area versus village core may have been a bit low. And I was thinking about this a bit, and I know we toyed with maybe not having any limit, but maybe just good design review. I could also see like 40, 80 or something like that working.
I think one of the things that we kind of discussed was possibly increasing the height a little bit taller, but also with a, we'll go room for an exception of, we'll go room for an exception that, under architectural review, that could be brought to the board to make an exception for taller buildings.
Okay.
Because there was that discussion of, you know, 40 feet might be good in this location, but it might be bad, you know, against the, you know, viewpoint of this location.
Yeah.
So I think one of the things that we kind of talked about was setting a, increasing the height a little bit, and then putting a clause in there for an exception that can be brought out, you know, if discussed with the board.
And like, view shed issues and stuff could be part, could be part of our guidelines.
Yeah.
Yes, and that, that was one of our thought processes with that.
Mike?
Yeah, I do remember that conversation, Jason. I'm glad you brought that up. And it sounded like Judy was thinking that possibly an exception for the height of maybe the main structure on the property, and like a mini grand hotel or something.
Yeah, that's.
Vision, rather than every building.
Yeah.
One main structure.
The developer's concern was more in regard, in regard to height for a hotel slash conference area.
Yeah.
And he wanted to be able to make sure that, you know, because I think he pointed to 60 feet was nothing compared to what, you know, he envisioned, well, I won't say nothing compared to what he envisioned, but wasn't large enough to be able to really accommodate a true conference center.
It wasn't close.
Yeah.
I think there was a lot of consensus that, that makes a lot of sense.
So just to clarify then, are we talking then, maybe 40 for most of the site, maybe 60, 80 for what's called the village core?
Yes.
And then maybe a single building that goes even above like the 80 for a larger structure under design review? Or?
I don't think we ever set up single building. I think we just.
I just heard the word "single building," that phrase, that's why I'm asking. What is the whole village core that would have that kind of, that higher limit?
I'm wondering if we could, somewhere in this stress, you know, in the overview, indicate that, you know, the, the goal of this is, is to provide.
indicate that, you know, the goal of this is to provide flexibility. And part of the value of that would be that if, for example, the applicant were to go to the ZBA to seek a variance, you know, that guideline would be there as a resource to the ZBA to be able to consider that, you know. Because I think ZBAs have a, zoning board has a tough charge when they're considering a variance request. And I think having, you know, a stated goal and flexibility in the overview for the district would provide them that.
So you're seeing going over that height as a variance then, and not just?
Well, I mean, it's hard to prescribe. It's hard for us to build this overlay district regulation in a way that, you know, like without, we would have to basically know what they want to build, and then that's kind of backwards, too. Like, but if you give, you know.
We want to give enough room for them to do something, but not stifle, you know, possibilities.
I mean, I think our concerns are the appearance from outside the area. We certainly wouldn't want, you know, to negatively impact the view, but also, you know, recognizing that this area is generally backed up against the ski area, which is pretty big, you know, that you could have some good heights without
Yes.
without obscuring anyone else's view, at least from outside of that area. And I think that flexibility is a good thing. What we're trying to do is encourage development, which is a benefit to the town. I think increased flexibility there is a good thing.
And it's important to keep in mind, for sure, for a large crowd tonight, when we measure height, we're measuring average height. And for a large structure, the developer, whoever it may be, might just want to put it on a flat pad. However, if they choose a sloped surface and not to flatten it out into a flat pad, we're talking a building that could be, let's say, the limit was eighty feet. It could be, you know, a hundred on one side and sixty on the other. And that would still be within that eighty feet, because it's the average.
I think I'm comfortable with the village zone having a slightly higher variance. I'm wondering about how big the.
Slightly higher height?
Height, yes, excuse me, height. But, yeah, it's good. How big would the village zone be? And?
It's limited to twenty-five percent of the?
That's right.
Yeah, there's a limit to the village zone.
So you can't just have, like, declare your whole site to be a village?
Yes.
Village Core can't be larger than twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
What happens if that twenty-five percent's two-thirds of the way up the mountain, though?
Yeah.
We're going to see that from I-93.
Well, I think you can still have appearance standards for those height, you know, you can have the height standards for that area, but define it so that it can't be visible, you know, above the ridge line of. You know the area better than anyone, honestly. Like, is there, do you think it's a likelihood that there would be a development kind of on top?
No, no, and actually, the owner of record did mention that, you know, he's planning on setting it far back in the lower area, lower than Route Three.
That was my understanding. I just did a quick look, you know, the Jackson Gore Resort Orbital Kimo was built in the past twenty years. And I think that's, I would say those are probably all like sixty-foot buildings, but, you know, five or six stories and, you know, nicely designed. But like, they provide nice housing, you know, without a big impact to the area. You know, I think it would suit the, it would be an exception to the rest of town, but I think if the goal of that is to kind of create a ski resort area, I think it would be appropriate.
So, just to kind of step back a little bit, so it sounds like we're still all kind of on board with kind of moving forward with this in some way. So in terms of the timeline, we have to decide upon some final language probably by next month's meeting to put forward to public hearings by December.
Which also means getting a map, right?
And we can talk about the map as well, yeah. So to really kind of nail things down a little bit, which I know is hard sometimes. So is there a way of putting this in writing for our thoughts about height? Because we seem to be flexible, and I don't know that, I mean, if we went to like forty, sixty, like forty elsewhere, I mean, forty, eighty, and eighty in the Village Core, I can't imagine that not working. And I think anything bigger might be off-putting to people in Plymouth.
I mean, I could even think like fifty, eighty would be okay. Like fifty in the whole district and eighty in the Village Core would be okay, too. That would be, I think there would be more flexibility. I mean, I think there are going to be limitations to, you know, what somebody's willing to invest in. But honestly, you know, the more height you can provide a building, the more cost-effective it's going to be in terms of units. And, you know, not that our ultimate goal is cost-effectiveness, but we want to.
If we want someone to succeed.
Financially viable for somebody to do this.
I do think that including like a view-impact analysis and an architectural review are going to be a very important part of this as well, just to reiterate that.
Is there a way of, I mean, you can have a really nice building that an architect says is fantastic. I mean, we can tell them what we want, but it might be good to have a little bit more specificity. And I don't know if, I mean, it's kind of vague language to say like, "style of a traditional New England ski resort" or something.
Yeah.
But.
I'm less excited about architectural style. My concern would be impacting, like, I think we could define height restriction as by saying, like, at no point should any structure be visible above any ridge line from Route Three A.
I guess what I'm thinking in part is, if part of this development might also be some technology sector or something. Traditionally, those buildings look different in a lot of what we're talking about. They don't have to, but they often do. And how do we feel about that?
I can agree with Phil. Like, I'm not super concerned about the architectural style of a building in that area, more of the impact it will have on sightlines through the mountain. Like, I live on Three A myself, and I enjoy driving down Three A and to be able to see the mountains and the trees and the foliage going on there right now. And so, yeah, my concern would be, you know, how would any building impact that view site?
My experience tells me that the best intentions of imparting architectural standards can set a bad taste for an applicant. And I've seen spite buildings go up intentionally.
Spite buildings?
That met the definition. You know, I'd rather give people the ability to meet their own architectural designs, honestly. Like, I don't think anybody's going to build anything.
And this is one of the benefits also of the architectural review. It's not that we're just relying on, as long as you can, like, follow these, like, changes in roof line every thirty feet or whatever, we are going to send it off to an architectural review potentially and say, "This is actually a well-designed building," as opposed to, "Does it just meet these numerical, random things we chose?" So maybe with that, we can be a little bit more lenient then.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, as long, if somebody wants to come up with those standards, I mean, I just don't feel.
Well, we have some of them right now in our regulations.
And I don't even like those.
Yeah. It's a tough one, because I agree they can be a hindrance sometimes. And sometimes a really beautiful building could have just straight lines.
Yeah. Look at the mill buildings in Manchester. They're just rollers of straight brick buildings.
And at the same time,
They're iconic.
We want to protect the town from, like, really, like, eyeswords coming up.
True.
I think we should consult with the planning at Waterville Valley and Lincoln to see how they're handling it, because they're really into developing the recreational towns.
That's a good thing to think about.
And I'd as well reiterate as well, Judy looked at a lot of language from different towns like this in putting this together. I'm not sure exactly which one she looked at, but she did do a lot of homework in putting this together, which is not to say there's nothing to question here, obviously, but but it is really helpful to look at other successful resorts and towns.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
I appreciate Judy's time that she put into this. I also think about Tenny Mountain and where it, how people in the community think about it. And I look at technology development and how it really doesn't need a ski area around it. It would be anywhere in the town. And I just think about the potential as a ski area if we had a developer like Les Otten, that type, that came to Plymouth. And if all these technology buildings are there, it may not be as, it may not be as interesting for them to come to Plymouth to develop the mountain if it's got a different purpose kind of around it and aura.
I can see that. And I guess the flip side of that is economics and.
Mixed uses.
Well, mixed use, but also to make this work financially, sometimes it helps to have those other auxiliary businesses that can simply get you in the black and make things work. Although I do understand the concern.
Just the natural beauty of the mountain, the skiing, that whole thing. And, you know, people going down the mountain and not seeing huge industrial or technology-type buildings with large parking lots around them. That's.
And this, I think, is why we have, you have to come with a full master plan.
Yeah.
And you have to go through a review process. And hopefully, some of that, what you're worried about, and rightfully so, can be mitigated in that process.
Because the PUD would make it so that the developer would have different zones planned out. So we would look at it and be able to see that it's not going to be all industrial or commercial and we can, so we could prevent that from happening.
Or just a field of asphalt.
Or just a field of asphalt. So we could prevent that from happening because of this ordinance. And at the same time, assure that the development will actually be financially viable and not become a burden to the town if it does, if it falls through, right?
That sounds good, yeah.
Okay.
I think it'd be interesting, now that we've just gotten this in our lap, that I'd love to hear, I'd love to see Michael go home, process paperwork, and see what his thoughts are besides Waterville Valley. It's a lot, there's a lot here to process.
Do you know if we've heard back from Judy about the ninety days versus our standard site plan review timeline?
I haven't heard anything from Judy.
Right.
Obviously, ninety days would be better, if we can do that.
I guess she is saying some other towns are doing that. I just wonder what the legal framework is for doing that. Any other, I'm tempted to open up for a public discussion now. Any other comments from the board, though, before we do? Well, if any members of the public would like to either ask questions for clarification or come up and make a statement, please come up and state your name and explain why you're, what questions you have or what statements you want to make.
I'm Henry A. Hearn from Plymouth. And I just, there was something in the conversation here about not being visible above the ridge line. I just want to point out that both Loon Mountain and Cannon have restaurants on the top of the mountain. So if you're saying there can't be anything above the ridge line, you preclude them doing a restaurant or some type of facility on top.
I'm not sure if we're totally against something up there. It may be more of a scale issue, or?
Yeah, I was actually thinking, I mean, my goal wasn't to, we're early in the stages of discussion. My idea is that something that's sited down at the bottom of the mountain shouldn't stick up so high that it obscures the view. But, yeah. Yeah, right.
Could be a big building.
It would be.
It would.
It depends what you're saying.
But there are a lot of perspectives, and, you know, they could be halfway up the mountain with a big building, you know, I mean. I think there should be some, my suggestion was just to put some bounds on appearance so that, but yeah, I don't disagree that it'd be good to have some opportunity to develop some resources on the hill.
Hi, Brooke Sabo-McDowell. I live here in Plymouth, but I grew up in Waterville. And I just really want to encourage you to look at other towns, because when I look at Waterville now, what I see is Disney World. And if we're thinking about Tenny and we want Disney World, then let's look at Waterville. But if we want something richer, then let's look at mountain towns around the country, because there are amazingly beautiful mountain towns around the country. And they're here in New Hampshire, and they're in Maine, and they're Vermont, and they're in North Carolina, and they're out west, and they're down south. So let's look broadly and talk to communities around, not just right next to us, because we have the potential to do something great with Tenny. And if we look at, if we're just looking at Waterville and we're just looking at Loon, then we're only taking from our neighbors. But we have potential to look all over, so please think broadly about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie Battle at Plymouth. I have a height-related question. It's not specifically to industrial areas, I don't think. But Langdon Road, next to Old Mayhew Funeral Home, or it's still Mayhew Funeral Home, I don't know. But there is a very large building right on the road that is much taller than everything around it. I'm not sure where the place is to have a discussion about that, but it just is very obviously out of place. And I don't know why it happened or how it happened, and if you want to direct me to somewhere to get that information?
I will say one odd part about that piece of land is that the property you're talking about extends into the parking lot next to it. So it looks like there is zero setbacks between the building and the property line, but in fact, the property line actually is in the parking lot. So there's some kind of arrangement that goes back way back when to have an easement or, you know, sharing of that land there, which makes it look like somebody built a very large building right on the property line, which is not technically, but it is disconcerting visually. I know what you're talking about.
And there is a thirty-five-foot height limit in the zoning ordinance currently. You know, how that's defined is, can be tricky from spot to spot. But I believe if there was a building permit issued without a variance there, it would have to meet that thirty-five-foot limit.
I think it's pushing at the very ends of it, but yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, but you mentioned earlier that there's an average. So it might be forty feet at one end and twenty feet at the other. And it might be, that would mean it's average of thirty-two, right? Or thirty.
Right.
So, but that's, I mean, enforcement is in the hands of select board and the building department.
Okay.
Like, that's not something that, there was no site plan, that wasn't a subdivision that didn't come to us. But the zoning ordinance does still apply to building permits.
Okay.
I had the same question when I saw that going up. And Joseph and I actually looked at the tax maps and where the property lines were and.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Claire McCann of Plymouth. I actually just wanted to kind of follow up on the suggestion of looking at other places, because I think it would be really helpful since this isn't necessarily, you know, everyone is kind of wondering what all these buildings might look like. I think it would be very helpful to actually get visuals of other resorts and look at what heights of those are, if you can find something similar to the slope of Tenny Mountain. Just actually visualize what everything might look like. It might help you define what language would be helpful for the property. And I also think you can look at a lot of other smaller ski areas from around the country. I don't know if his plan is to maintain something that looks like a small resort, I mean, or make something that's more like Vale in New Hampshire, I really don't know. But I think finding what different heights of buildings look like on a steep slope would be really great to have as a visual guide when making these. And I also don't know if in the architectural review, you can also include something about some color scapes or general, like, landscaping of plants and what type of plants are included or not included in the general plan of things, to also avoid maybe just having buildings right along a road. I don't know. But if there's any kind of landscape design involvement with those architectural reviews, I think that might also be helpful.
We do currently have landscape as part of our site plan review process. But actually sending it out to architectural review along with everything else could be a possibility.
Cool.
And I lost my train of thought, there was another part I wanted to respond to. The other towns, I'll just, I'll come back if I think of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I was going to say, you mentioned like the vision of a particular developer. And I think one of the important things to keep in mind here is that we have to really make this developer agnostic. And we don't know who a developer might be today versus 20 years from now, 40 years from now, and how long this ordinance will last. But we really have to look forward and make sure that we're not just writing this for one person. And it may, when we draw the map even, it may encompass other lands as well.
I think it was more of a comment about what does actually 80-foot look like if you're looking at Tenny Mountain.
Well, and I heard that part too, yeah.
Right, yeah. Which isn't necessarily dependent on specifically who the developer is.
Yeah.
It's hard to visualize specifically.
Any other comments or questions?
Do we have members online at all?
I was just going to ask Joseph, actually, yes.
We do, yeah. And if anybody wants to just raise your hand, if anyone on Zoom wants to chime in.
How many people do we have on Zoom tonight?
Uh, one, two, three, we have four, and then two town halls and one PBTV. So four public.
Well, coming back to the board for a second, do we have, do we have guidance? I think Judy's going to be here next month again. Do we have guidance for her before then in terms of anything we might want to see tweaked? I think the current one, this is, I'm actually blanking on this right now. Do our current ordinance, does it have a design slash architectural review in it?
No.
It does not, right? So no, okay. So it sounds like everybody wants that. Maybe not.
I'm on the fence.
Which can allow us for looser design guidelines if we actually have a review process.
Right.
Yeah. And then we're not writing, it has to be read with like the defense.
Yeah, and it has to have like a 30-foot roof line then broken by this and then. In terms of height issues, we kind of seem to be gravitating towards the same area, but I'm not sure we're totally at the same. So I think it's currently 40, 60, like whole space versus the village core. It seems like we're comfortable with a little bit higher, certainly in the village core. I'm not sure, Phil, you mentioned possibly in the whole space as well. Sure we need to go much over 40, which is like three stories on average, depending on slopes and stuff. And then in the village core, if possible, it would be nice not to have to send someone for a variance if they wanted to make something that worked. At the same time, we don't want to have overbuilding.
Don't want to see like a.
Which is also where the actual unit density comes in as well.
And keep in mind, I mean, right now we have, we have this plant, minimum size for the 10-unit pod would be 100 acres and we're identifying up to 25%, or 25% of that is the village core. So 25 acres of tall buildings could be a lot.
Could be.
Yeah.
I do think that 25% is actually fairly large, depending on that.
Yeah. Well, 25%, how many acres is it right now that Steve controls?
Well, I mean, it depends on how we define the area because like it could be the whole region, right?
Or it could be a part of it.
Right. Is it 1,000 acres right?
1,200 plus.
Well, 1,200 acres, 25% is a lot of, a lot of core.
We also have in here, there's a minimum number of acres to actually use this. And it's possible to come to us in incremental process if they meet the minimum number of acres to actually use this ordinance and do a couple of different phases of master plans.
And that minimum's 100, correct?
I don't recall the number off the top of my head.
I read that.
Yeah. Yeah, do you want to have a?
Bruce A. Hearn, I'm from Plymouth. One thing I would add is that you be sure that any design that comes in does not, is not a building that's going to require the town of Plymouth to buy a bigger ladder truck than what they already have. I mean, just when you consider the expense to the town, that could be very significant if they ended up having to buy a different ladder truck.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Good point. What's our current ladder truck capability? Do we know?
I can support an eight-story. That's the tallest buildings we have in town are eight, and that's Lang, Merrill Place.
Merrill Place on Langdon. I'd almost be inclined to.
Keep, keep in mind that if we, you know, I think there's an agreement with the university that I think there was a subsidy for that fire truck because the university's tall buildings and, you know, if we were to allow tall buildings in other parts of town, we might lose, you know, the town may have to foot the bill for that themselves. But, you know, honestly, the tax income that would be from this area would probably be sufficient to cover that.
Or there could be an impact fee of some sort.
Yeah, I mean, it could be. We don't currently have impact fees.
It's allowed for, but we don't have any system in place.
So. Number of units per building? If it's a hotel, it's not really an issue, but we are talking about residential as well. And we are talking about maybe some relief there. And, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I can imagine the splitting as well between the village core and the rest of the resort. I can imagine going for like eight outside and a little bit more inside. I mean, Mike, you have experience, Michael, with the crunching the numbers on this sort of stuff and what works.
Looking at anywhere from eight to 14 units based on like what Loon has, they have 14 unit structures. They were kind of nicely built and you could, they could lay in nicely too. We're not talking about a flat terrain.
And is that kind of spread out or in a village core sort of area or?
Uh, one contiguous units, but it's, it's offset. You might have, you know, six units and eight, but it's all part of one compound.
Yeah.
That's to make it economically work for the sewage and water systems and the cost of infrastructure that's burdened on the developer as well, unfortunately.
Yes.
I, I could envision commercial units over six. I think that makes, would make sense in a core where they.
Commercial units over six?
What's that?
Wait, what do you mean by commercial units?
Retail.
More than six, more than six units per building.
I think there could be something.
I don't, I'm not sure we have a particular regulation for number of units per building for commercial.
Be a hotel.
And a hotel, you can have as many as you want, could fit in the building. I think we're talking about residential?
And I would, I would think it would be totally applied to a ski area. To have more than six units for a timeshare, for a hotel, obviously we've got an application for 93 just a couple, few months ago.
Well, hotel is not really residential though. So specifically residential.
But I. Units per acre had to do with residential dealings, didn't apply to hotels.
And I'm just saying, I would, would love to see that type of housing. I would be a little concerned about more than six units for just residential living.
Even in the village core?
I think it makes sense to have more density in the village core and less density outside of the village core. What exactly that looks like, I'm open to suggestion about what is most viable. If the 14 units, again, hard to visualize, is more viable.
Yeah, I'm not sure six is economically viable, especially in the village core area. And if we can get like more housing, I mean, it would be nice. And I, I think we could make it work, like with a whole master planned project, which would have to be submitted, where we could actually make it work in a reasonable way that it wouldn't just be a hodgepodge of like standard developer practices because it is a master planned project.
So on page seven, this is suggesting 20, 20 dwelling units per acre.
Well, that's per acre, not per building.
So I'm sorry, per, thank you, thank you, okay. So that could be 20.
That's density in.
So that's the density, so there could be theoretically 20 dwelling units on an acre with 14 apartments, whatever, 14 livable spaces per those 20, in each of those 20 units.
This is averaged too, so that could be 20,000 units on 100 acres.
What, what's it an average of?
This was a little bit contentious at our last meeting. And there was some lack of clarity about this. And we might want to just be able to define what we want here.
Overall density, I see.
Yeah, I mean.
I was on page seven. Okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
So, I mean, if they wanted to put 10,000 units in the, in the downtown, in the, in the center area in high-rise buildings, you know.
And lessen the density elsewhere.
Yeah, they could, but.
I recall Judy pushing back a little bit at that logic and saying it's not exactly what she meant. And I was having a hard time actually fully parsing out. So I think we need some clarification of the language here.
Yeah.
And, and to get that clarified language, I think if we could actually say what we're comfortable with, that might be helpful.
Yeah, these, these are all drafts and, I mean, she clearly means for us to mark these up and make it what's important to us.
Right, because how that reads on page seven, the overall density, not to exceed 20 dwelling units per acre, but that's when you're applying, that's when you're putting residential uses in the village core. So it's like you're, you can increase your number in the village core to get that residential aspect, but then you can lessen your density outside.
It's kind of like a.
OSRD?
OSRD.
Yeah, that's what it sort of feels like. It's a lot of units on an acre.
So, units per building.
That's the question of six or 14.
It's a question of units per building and in one versus the, like village core versus the entire area. And are we on 40, 80 for height or are we not? Or, I just want to nail down some of these numbers.
Yep.
Obviously there's some broader language that needs to be cleared up. We want the design review and.
I can tell you I'm not for over 80.
Could we be 40, 80?
We could, we could, I mean, we could leave it at 40, 60 as it's drafted. If, I mean, if people aren't comfortable with 80, I mean, I just, I'm thinking that flexibility is good there.
Yeah.
80 is how many stories?
Traditionally eight, but, or, but how they're talking, you know, your first four might be 16 feet.
Yeah, yeah. So it might be more like six to seven.
Yeah.
I think 60 works, yeah. What's that? I think 60, myself 80.
I personally wouldn't mind going to 80 as long as we had other guidelines, design, performance, whatever, about visuals and how it fits into the overall landscape.
So just briefly, most of the development's going to be done on the lower part, which is basically parallel to Route 3, right? And the tree height there on average is what, 45 feet? I mean, so if you say 60, you're talking 15 feet. And if you're talking setback, you're really not going to see it at 60, so 80. I just hate restricting a developer, right? I'm speaking for myself right now. I'm not, I'm not an architectural engineer and so on. I know where my expertise fields are. And sometimes we need to see the creativeness of the people that do this for a living. And Steve's work, I'm not, not being biased or anything, if you do background, you see his, his developments are nothing but top notch all the way through. It would really be nice, I know that we can't see what he, he envisions because we're setting rules right now, but it's really.
Well, again, we have to write this for anybody though, not just my person.
No, but that's, that's the challenge.
Right now is now, 20 years from now is not now. So we've got to write it for, don't even think about him.
And that's a challenge, it is.
I mean, and at the same time, I think we want, the reason we're looking at a pod is because it does provide that flexibility.
80.
And we want to provide that flexibility. And at the same time, it's our role here to also protect the town and the town's desires and interests, part of which are economic development and feasible economic development, but part of which are also character and other stuff like that. And part of this is also if you write something, it has to pass town meeting and get voted on. And we have to, frankly, on a very practical level, we have to consider that as well.
Yeah. My overall logic is that if, if Tenny Mountain has to develop, I would rather see the development intensified onto a smaller acreage so that the rest of the mountain can remain trees or less dense. And so I'm in favor of allowing for more height in the village district specifically if that allows for less density and a smaller footprint of impact on the land overall. So that's probably why I'm most comfortable with the 40, 80, if that allows for a master plan, again, so that the impact is on a smaller footprint overall.
You mean in a certain area, right? You're talking like a small area, that the 40, 80?
Yeah, so the village district would be just.
The village core would be 80, and then the rest of the area, the rest of the village would be 40, with the village core comprising of 25% of the overall area.
Currently in the village, that would be 25% of the acreage of the development. We could reduce that to 20 if you were, 15.
Which could be significant.
Which could be significant, exactly.
Maybe we should look at that as well.
250 acres of core at 80, 80 feet in height.
So that is a concern of mine as well.
And then the area grows, you have more people living there, you have more box stores being proposed, you have more, which is why probably there are people here. When you encourage the residential use, you, you're going to see more pressure, more pressure for box stores, you're going to see more pressure for a lot of things for a small town like Plymouth.
So how's that, so are you concerned about the, the level of density in the village core?
I have some concerns, yeah.
Okay.
Is it possible to say, I mean, I know it's possible, do we want to say 25% with maybe a cap on the total acreage for the village core?
Yeah.
So like 25%, but no more than?
Yeah.
Maybe something like that?
Yeah.
In terms of a reasonable size for each of these, I mean, it could be multiple village cores, they bring multiple plans, but we're, so we don't create a whole, I don't know, that would happen reasonably, like a whole city though, like.
Yeah.
Because we have enough acreage to do so.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'll just run that out there. I'm not sure if we want to do that or not.
You know, I look at it that Steve could sell 100 acres to an individual and they start putting up 80-foot tall homes, just 25% of their, and then he sells another 100 acres. We just don't know what's going to happen in the future. I'm just a little concerned. We have, we have some pretty good zoning that we've developed over the years, over a period of a very long time, and it served the town well and I just.
And yet Tenny keeps failing.
We're not talking about.
So you didn't need to bring that up.
It's not for the use of, that it's our zoning. We've, we've been very receptive to, I think, three plans, major plans that have come in front of the town and, or four or five maybe even over the last 25 years, 30 years. And the planning board sat here and they've been very receptive to the developer in the plans. And, and then all of a sudden they just go away. It wasn't for the zoning that they went away, it was for any other reason. The town's eager to have that place successful.
I think if we could look at successful resorts and what they do.
Yeah.
And use that as to some extent a test of feasibility and what works in our current world, which seems to be reflected in here. I mean, we argue about the details. I think that's a good idea.
When we see, you know, all you need is 100 acres. So there could be, as you said, many different cores throughout that whole region of the overlay that we're talking about, not just one, but several.
But then they would, then they would usually be smaller though. Once you start dividing it up.
Right, it would be 25 acres if it's, if it's 100 acres over on this part of the overlay. This other overlay has 100 acres and they, which they have to have the minimum, there's 25 acres. And it could get away from us pretty quick.
Well, I think the point of the plan to use development is, is that he brings us a master plan and like, he might have, you know, maybe there's a 200-acre parcel and that's the PUD and, and he isolates, you know, part of it for a village center. But if he starts selling things off, they're not all subject to their own, that's part of the same. plan due to development, where like, he might sell twenty-five acres to a developer to put in five ho- homes on five-acre lots. And he might, but it's part of the, I mean, that's the whole thing, is, is that rather than approving incremental development step by step, like, you get a developer who's got a, a master plan for the area, that's what we're reviewing, and then, yeah, they, they may, he might build things, things himself. He might sell parts, portions of land to a home developer, so that he can focus on the commercial area, and, and like, you know, not each one of those parcels is subject to the same restrictions of the whole zone. They are regulated within the approved, the approval of the planned unit development that we would consider. It's like, it's like a big site plan for the whole area, that says, yes, we're gonna approve you putting a village center here with high density, and these are gonna be lower-density areas, and like, who cares if he sells those and somebody else develops them? They're, as long as they're in conformance with what we've already approved, like, that's part, that's the whole point of this.
Right, and so we, we change-
It's kind of making like a mini-town within the town, and saying, we want, we want somebody to think about this, we want somebody to lay out the streets, we want to think about, we don't want, you know, all the services intermixed, we want, you know, we want a, you know, a rational layout of, yeah, the city center's here, it's high-density, but there are restaurants, and like, these, these residential parts of town are gonna be lower-density, but, you know, if there are stores, they're gonna be here, and then, yeah, he might sell those lots off and say, yeah, uh, Market Basket's gonna put in a boutique grocery store in one corner, or something like that, you never know.
It's all still subject to the approved plan.
Right.
And-
So the town has been very clear over a period of two or three years, and prior, um, they don't want to see large-scale residential developments, they don't want to see twenty units in a building, they, they've been pretty clear that six is the maximum. And what it appears that maybe this could be, and I'm not saying that it's going to be, but he could come through and propose in a sixty or forty-foot or eighty-foot building, twenty, thirty, forty, sixty-unit apartments or housing, and there goes our small town, and a lot of box stores start coming in, and it, it changes our small town. It also, again, someone that may come in to develop the mountain as a ski area, not necessarily a residential area, but comes in to make it a ski area, would need the raw land in order to supplement developing the ski area and the beauty around it. So I would just, I'd be a little concerned, because I could envision thousands of residential units in and around that mountain, depending on the number of acres in this overlay, are we talking a thousand acres in this overlay, are we talking several thousand, are we talking a couple hundred acres?
We can look at the map, actually, probably next, before moving on. And I think we can look at the feasibility of scale here, and I think most of what we see when we look at similar developments is, for the most part, not sprawling out of control like that, and I know there's a certain amount of faith in hoping that's not gonna happen again, like here. It doesn't tend to happen.
I know that the survey that Judy did, um, just a year and a half ago with the housing committee, it was very clear that six units and less was what the town folks wanted to see, they didn't want to see anything over six units. And that was extremely obvious in the housing survey that we did. I'm not sure if that has to be different from any mountain overlay, but it seems like it might be a backdoor for some developers that want to come in and develop Plymouth with housing, because they can make a quick buck. We shouldn't necessarily be here for the developer.
I would also point out that there were lots of people who said they would be more comfortable with larger residential in that particular district. I think you even said that, and, and I would also, um, point out when we did the actual, like, um, the visual survey, um, there were a lot of people, depending on the style of the building, that seemed like they were more comfortable with larger buildings as well. Again, it came down to design versus, um, like, a good design versus a bad design. I mean, we could put this forward, and if the town rejects it, the town rejects it. Um, I think there's still some tweaking to be had, um, and I think we don't just want to bend to a developer, um, that's not why we're here. But at the same time, we do want to promote economic development, which is good for the town. And, but it has to be good economic development, that's not gonna ruin our town, which is your concern, and rightly so. And I say we, you know, move forward with this, and make some tweaks to it, and the town can decide.
There gonna be a map, but we said there's gonna be-
Well, we have to decide, um, where the limits of this overlay would be. And I think it will be the current resort, but it might go further into some other privately-held land. And just as a reminder, because the overlay might go over somebody's land, there's no obligation to use it in that way. Uh, and in fact, all the underlying zoning will still be available. So all the ag zone will still be there, and if you want to use your land in this way, you could, or not. And again, nobody's gonna like tell you to sell your property to put it into this, um, use. So we have to decide, like, how far we want to go with that. Neil?
I think we, we need to do a little research on what's economically feasible, whether six units, or eight units, or ten units, what, what's feasible?
The bigger you go, the more feasible it is, and you have to kind of draw a line somewhere.
But there's a point, y- you know, construction today is expensive, and, uh, you know, there's a, a point where a, of, of developer's just gonna walk away.
Well, you in the past have talked about eight-packs and twelve-packs, and being the kind of limit case, um, anything less than that, yeah.
That's, that's the number that works, when you add up the electrical infrastructure, sewage infrastructure, the cost to make money back, and I think that was only like a twenty percent return. It was just enough to get by.
Would you see a benefit of a higher number in a core? So if the whole thing was, you know, eight or ten, let's say, would you-
Yeah, there, there's always a benefit, yeah.
Well, there's economic benefit, of course, yeah.
Less line, less sewage line to build.
So-
I'm, I'm wondering if it may, oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's, the overlay, when we talk about the overlay, we keep referring back to, uh, Steve, or Tenny Mountain, which is about seven-hundred-and-eighty acres, say, because remember, there's three or four hundred acres that are in Hebron, the top of the mountains elsewhere. We can't control other towns' height restrictions and so on. And then, um, when we talk about architectural design and everything, there's, there are other properties that are gonna come in. So when we say we have a master plan, a master plan may not have the same theme all the way through. And that's, when we talk about a theme, I'm referring to sidewalks, roadways, the town picking up that from the tax stamp, and plowing, and so on.
Landscape architecture, not the, not the building architecture.
What's that?
The landscape architecture, not the building architecture.
Right, he might use different type of grad C, right, have a different feeling and everything, so we're talking about multiple developers, right? Not just an agnostic for the future and so on, but how do you control all these other parties? Forty-five, if you go all the way down to the rotary, just say if somebody wanted to buy all that property, and put some more peaks in there for mountain, for season, pickleball courts and all that, it's all recreation, quite a project.
Do we need a larger tract minimum for the PUD?
Well, as you go, as you go, as you go farther down, uh, you head towards the, the rotary on Mayhem Turnpike, the, the land's a lot flatter, as, as we all know. So you don't have to increase that, because Tenny is mostly mountainous, so I wouldn't think you would.
Well, if one of the concerns is that we're gonna end up all, with all of these hundred-acre tracts, with a village core in each of them, and then we have five village cores spread across, maybe we need to increase the tract?
Yeah, I, I think that depends on the, the map, and, and how we lay it out.
Yep.
I, I do think it's worth keeping in mind, and I think it's worth keeping in mind, the, the potential of what we could be creating, which could be not what we want.
Right.
Um, and I think it's worth keeping in mind, as we often talk about when we get to like, allowing certain things, the fact that we allow it doesn't mean it just gets built overnight.
Yeah.
And, um, we very rarely see anything getting built out at some like crazy breakneck speed that just like exceeds all of our expectations, it's usually the opposite.
Yeah.
This, you know, if something starts snowballing, you never know. Um, and so it's good to look at the worst-case scenario, but at the same time, some flexibility, understanding that development does tend to be slow, I think is also worth keeping in mind.
We also have to keep in mind, um, Ashland had a developer, I don't know how many units they were proposing, what was it, so?
Seventy-four, I believe.
Seventy-four units, that's, that was down by the ball field. I know I came from a town of unity, and it was a population of, what was it, four hundred, six hundred people, and they were proposing a thousand units. But something like this, we put it on the paper, we know that the townspeople wanted six or less units, and the developers, we heard after from Judy, all wanted many more units per building. And it's the developers that are gonna be putting this on paper and making it work, and if they can't make it work, they'll go in, to another town financially, if they can't get their twenty, thirty units, um, similar to towns around us that have many rentals, buildings. So, I, I'm just rea, I, I don't know if we could put something like this together, or this year, and push it through, I think it's gonna take a lot of, because we don't want to make a mistake with this, our town is, is too precious to push this through quick. That's my two cents.
I agree, I think there's a lot of detail in this, I'm starting to think we should continue to work on this for another year, honestly, I mean, this is big.
I-
I agree.
I was asking myself the same question going into this.
Yeah.
And my own goal, um, personally, was that we'd see if we could do it, um, in a satisfactory way that made us comfortable, and if we couldn't, we could always take some more time. The danger of taking more time is you kind of lose some of the steam momentum sometimes. On the other hand, the benefit of taking more time, obviously, as you're saying, is, um, being careful and checking all the details and all of that. So I would like to personally act as if we're gonna do it, um, see how far we get. And if we can't get it to a satisfactory state this year, then it is what it is. Judy have a comment?
Can you clarify, when you say six units, is, for those of us who aren't maybe familiar with this terminology, are you, upon what amount of ground are we talking about six units, like?
Six units per building.
But can the building be any size, because I feel like six units can be, like, are you talking about a two-hundred-square-foot unit, or a nine-hundred-square-foot unit, does that matter?
Regardless, you could potentially put twenty units per acre, twenty dwellings per acre, and then, we'll just use the number six, and then six units per dwelling, that's just an example of how this is right now.
It seems like a strange way to measure things, when the units could be different sizes, I guess, is my, my thought.
Fairly standard thing, it's just-
It's, it just, it seems really unclear if you're just saying six units, because you mean, like, the six units could be any size, so wouldn't it be like, how much actual acreage could be residential, and how tall could it be, and like, yeah, you can discuss, I mean, I just feel like six units within a massive building is very different than six units within a small building, and that also changes the economics of what type of units you're talking about, so I remember him talking about wanting to create econ- economy units as well as luxury units, so I feel like talking about units in this way is potentially not helpful, when he was talking about doing a huge different gradient of different types of things. Just to put that out there, it might be helpful to find a different way of measuring that.
So, I'm thinking at this point, we have a lot of, of other stuff to discuss. And I don't want to spend all night talking about this. So, we've got some feedback, um, we can send this along to Judy, and, and to Joseph, and see where this leads in terms of a, another draft, see where we end up next time, and see how comfortable we are moving forward or not, um, in terms of timeline, and, but for now, while we have our heads in it and steam going, I don't want to just put it aside, even if it ends up that we take another year to actually write this thing and pass it, we should keep the momentum we have right now, while it's still fresh in our minds, to actually get as close as we can, maybe even get something presentable, but at least as close as we can. In six months from now, we're gonna be like, starting from, starting from scratch again, like, where were we? That's always a danger. All right, so, um, moving along, um- Yes?
My name is Dean, and I'm in West Plymouth.
Come on to the microphone.
You go a little closer, please.
One thing you haven't considered here is the traffic on three A. Sometimes I can't get out of my garage, so for half an hour, I have to go to circle and go back, and you keep crowding stuff up on that mountain, which there's nothing wrong with it. Between three A and coming down Yeton Road, you know, people used to come out there and walk, and they don't want to walk there anymore, because of these idiots are going so fast. And I don't know what to do, but I, I think you gotta consider the-
Yeah.
The extra traffic, right, Brad?
Yeah, I have, want more traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we have also the last thing from the hop here, and I do want to get to our others up on our list. We have an inclusionary zoning ordinance that we talked about, and there was some pretty broad support last time, there was some concern over rental versus ownership, though, and, um, I'm just curious where we are in that. Mike?
I have a number of rentals on my property, so I have a little bit of experience with, when we talk about inclusionary zoning, we're talking about income verification, or lesser rent, or a lesser purchase of a home. One thing that maybe some people don't realize is income base can go with the person, and it's always been that way. And with my units, I've rented to many, many people who come with either vouchers, I've had someone with a section A, and it, but it goes with the person, and it's, it's kind of a nice way to go, no one knows. I know, because I fill out the paperwork, they take it and send it in to whatever organization they're working with. But that mechanism is already there for, I'm not sure how many, hundreds of people in Plymouth, that already have that mechanism to get income based, based upon what they make, to get an affordable, uh, much more affordable for them property. When we talk about, uh, a inclusionary zoning, possibly, I believe, it goes with the home. So that home would, would always be there, and always have, for the most part, the same, um, folks that would need to qualify for it. And with inclusionary zoning, it's probably, it sounds like, run by something like what the Laconia Housing Authority runs. And it may not even be someone in the community, it may be someone outside of the community that's working it, and checking the, the boxes on who's qualifying, and looking at the income. We have a mechanism that works really well, I've thought, for Plymouth, I'd be concerned about an outside organization deciding what is, what's, um, not only the limits, but who they're bringing in, as far as-
It's a pretty simple metric that, in terms of the numbers.
And it, but it's, it's a mechanism that we already have, and I just wanted to let you know, as a landlord, it's happening already.
So, just as a counter to this, this would provide a voluntary incentive for a developer to build housing that is affordable to people, affordable to people who don't require a public subsidy to live there. So we're actually talking about, um, potentially bringing people off of public subsidies into affordable housing based upon a market metric that the developer agrees to actually build these out of their own pocket, because you're getting another incentive for higher density. And if the developer doesn't want to do it, they don't have to do it, if they do, they can build, and we know we need more affordable units, because everybody's like talking about how expensive housing is, um, more affordable units without relying on outside subsidies to live there.
I think it's important to note, also, in the second page of this inclusionary zoning, it says that dwellings qualify, the dwellings qualifying as affordable housing shall be compatible- it says that dwellings qualify, the dwellings qualifying as affordable housing shall be compatible in architectural style and appearance with the market rate dwellings in the proposed development. The affordable units shall be interspersed throughout the overall development. The structures must include energy-efficient construction that will ensure long-term affordable annual operation. So that's interesting because they're all gonna be the same, essentially.
But who would manage it? Who would?
There are outside groups as,
No, no, actually, four seventeen eight addresses this directly. There's nobody who manages it. It's a deed restriction that the developer has to put on the property. So anybody can enforce it. So, I mean,
There are groups who typically do this, though, like various nonprofits and such.
But it's a legal, it's a legally binding restriction that runs on the property in perpetuity that has to be observed.
Right. And they usually work with a, a nonprofit, like the Laconia Housing Authority would manage it, or an organization like that.
It could be your bank when you buy it, like, you know, they're,
I don't know if a bank would be involved in something like that.
So, I mean, it specifically talks about a deed restriction, restrictive covenant, or contractual arrangement through the local, state, or federal housing authority, or other nonprofit housing trust or agency. So, I mean, but it could just be a deed restriction or a covenant, too. Like, it doesn't have to necessarily,
Well, it would be in the deed, it would have to be.
We don't have to try to like scare people by mentioning Laconia or something.
But, I mean, the, the point is that there, I mean, the whole point of this is that you don't wanna just create a bunch of affordable housing and then release it to the market to be bought by speculators who are gonna resell it for three times as much money.
Yeah.
The, the point is that they, these restrictions are supposed to
Keep it affordable.
Ensure that they're, they continue to be affordable moving forward. And, and the affordability is, is based on a metric that scales over time.
And it's not publicly subsidized. Like Section Eight. So it's like not the government paying someone's rent. In many ways, it's from a, from a kinda free-market perspective, it's providing incentives to actually
But it couldn't be someone,
Natural affordable housing. Yeah, go ahead.
But it couldn't be someone that is one of the higher earners in the community could not just go out and buy one of these extra inclusionary home, homes.
No, but they could buy the house next door.
So it is limited on who would be able to buy it. It's limited. And then when they go to sell it, if there's a boom in prices on homes and we always hear about our grandparents that bought a house for, you know, fifty dollars and then hold on to it for thirty years and then sell it for a lot, hundreds of thousands of dollars, they buy it, they don't participate in that boom the way that traditional folks that buy the home. It's the free market.
But, but, but at least they'd have a home. And a lot of these people can't even afford to buy a home as it is. And that's the, that's the flip side of this.
The whole point is that if you buy a home that's, if you qualify and you need to buy a home and you hold it for twenty years, like, in twenty years, you're gonna use the same definition of affordability. So it's gonna be no more than thirty percent of the income of the buyer based, and they have to be at or below the area median income, or something, you know, something along those lines. So like, the area median income is going to go up. So the price of the house can go up, but it goes up with the area median income.
Yes.
Like, you know, the, you know, housing prices may triple, but the area median income may only go up by fifty percent. So your house sale price would only go up by fifty percent.
So the housing committee, back almost a year ago, when they heard this, there was overwhelming support for an incentive for a developer who's doing a development, they only get five homes, but we'd give them an extra home, or an extra two homes, that they could put into the market to hopefully more units lowers the price theoretically. Bruce Wiget, on the housing committee at that time, said, why don't we do it, and I forget the word that was used, organically, where that extra house or that extra two houses has to be smaller, no bigger than a certain footprint, to make it more affordable, so the price reduces, so that organically, anybody could buy it. So that was something that the housing committee overwhelmingly thought was a great idea.
So we've already created some mechanisms to allow for smaller lot sizes and smaller homes on those smaller lots in a lot of the changes we've made. And, and we've talked about this at length on the housing committee and the planning board already. I'd personally be in favor of saying, like, you know, we've talked about this, we don't seem to be completely in agreement, although there seems to be more agreement about the ownership units than the rental units. Maybe we just let the voters decide. If we like it, we do. If not, we don't.
I'm okay with where this is right now.
Me, too.
And if the voters say no, then that's it, it's done.
And this is just an option, it's not a requirement.
Yeah. In some states, it can be a requirement.
Yeah, it's not in our state.
It's not allowed to be a requirement in our state.
I fully expect that a builder who was building some affordable units would probably make them smaller. That's, I think they would have to.
Right. We've done quite a bit to, to spur housing in Plymouth. We have, as John said,
We have.
Has spearheaded this, and I, I appreciate John's efforts on it, to make lots smaller in Plymouth. Theoretically, when a developer comes in and does a development, they can put more buildings or more homes on that land. And this is the next step, which maybe might not be necessary, but I love the incentive part of it, that they get an extra two units on top. So, or a percentage. I think that's doable. I just worry about having the outside organizations coming into Plymouth and running that for the town, or not for the town, but for the developer, and putting it into their, letting them deal with it. I, I, again,
It's just, it's just an incomprehension.
Not many people in this room are familiar with how that process works. I am not fully, probably there are some people that are more familiar with housing than that. I'm not sure.
I will also say on a practical level, towns that have done this have not tended to see it used all that heavily, and some even not at all. And it provides another option for developers to take or not. And again, because it's not mandated the way that it is in some states, it is just an option, a lot of developers have chosen not to use it. But it provides one more tool in the toolbox if they wanna use it. And I don't see any reason not to offer that as a possibility. And if they don't want it, they don't want it. And that's their choice. So I would say that we should move this on to our next meeting and we can decide if we wanna bring it to a public hearing or not at that point. Maybe, maybe we don't, I don't know. But I hear, I hear a good amount of support, a little bit of mixed support as well, though, and some, obviously, some criticism as well, and,
I would love to look at a few housing authorities in the state, see how it's working for those communities, where they are. I think it's gonna take a little bit more research than just deciding yea or nay at the next meeting.
Well, if you wanna provide that research and present it to us. We, we did look into this to some extent, and there are a bunch of nonprofits out there who help with this on a regular basis. And it's not just large state-run or municipal-run housing authorities. There are lots of groups who help with this, and they do it on a regular basis. And it's fairly routine.
There is a mechanism, and I, there are a number of landlords that are very conscious of our community and do a super job of bringing folks into, into living with us, among us. And we have a huge reservoir of homes since the college was pulled into their, back to the campus. Number of units downtown that are already built. So, I just worry about, again, many, many box stores and all the population. But, anyway, ready to move on.
All right, thank you. All right, commercial storage facilities. Excuse me. This is moving us away from the HOP and housing-related issues. So where does this come from? There have been several applications in the last few years for storage facilities around town. And we haven't really seen all that much action in actually building them, but we've approved a bunch. And there have been a lot of concerns from residents about the fact that they've been very close to residential properties. And people not wanting the traffic, the visual impact, and other parts of what it means to, like, you buy a house in a neighborhood and then all of a sudden a storage facility might be moving in and really being concerned about that. And so I think we, we were thinking it might be helpful to, currently, a little bit of a backstory. So currently, when we look at storage units, we just look at them as a standard commercial use. And to actually separate that use out, as a separate use. And so it wouldn't just be a commercial use. And as a separate use, for example, we could have a little bit stricter of a sense of what it actually means, what we want. And also, we could put it through a special exception process, which means if you wanna do one of these, you go to the zoning board and ask for permission. And they have to consider things like community character, approximation to residences and all that sort of stuff, which is one of the things that zoning does. It helps us keep conflicting uses away from one another. And as I would envision this, at least, we could have that separate use for storage. And, yeah, be a little bit more specific then. If it comes in, it has to go through a zoning board, and they have to decide, like, does Plymouth want one of these here as opposed to over here? Because of how, because of how it might in fact, impact a community. And Joseph did some legwork and looked at some other ordinances around the state and put together some sample language, which to me looks pretty good. The one thing I was kinda thinking is looking at what happened recently with some of our zoning board meetings, there were some questions about what constitutes a storage unit? And whether a trailer or something like that could be a storage unit, or whether we were more specific about what a storage unit is. And perhaps that could use some tweaking in terms of, in response to recent conversations in town. Overall, though, it seems to, I don't know, I, I like Joseph, what you put together here, and we just have to kinda go through the use table if we do this and say, by zone, permitted, not permitted, special exception, basically. You might say not permitted in like, single-family residential. I think that'd probably be a no-brainer. Ag zone might be special exception. It's especially some of the ones in the ag zone, but also along Highland there, which caused some concerns about closeness to residential properties.
So should we look at this list of suggestions, or should we look at the use table and discuss that?
Well, any broad questions or concerns or comments first? Does everybody think this might be a good idea? Based on recent conversations and application stuff in town?
Yeah, it seems like there's some concern in the town about this kind of thing.
So, I mean, we could just go through, like, single and multifamily residential are probably gonna be no, yeah?
I would prefer not to see them there.
Village commercial? There is a little bit of storage downtown already, down the hill. Okay, so, so, so just a no, not a special exception?
That would be my preference.
Okay.
I mean, they can always seek a variance.
And we could always talk about it further later, but, and of course, anything that's already there gets to stay there, it's just anything new.
Right, it's new development.
Yeah. And ag zone, I would say special exception.
Yeah.
I would as well.
ICD, I would say special exception?
I would say permitted in the ICD.
Or permitted?
許了 Yeah.
Okay. And, civic, oh, highway commercial? There is a good amount of residential.
There is, but there's a lot of, I mean, I would say that would be a special exception.
Special exception.
I mean, I think that's supposed to be a mixed-use area. I think that,
Well, what kind of mixed-use area?
My, my vision for that is a mixed-use area.
So special exception, civic, no?
No.
No.
No. What am I missing?
Multifamily residential?
You said both.
Both of them, yeah.
So, so to summarize, John, they would be permitted by right in the ICD and by special exception in the highway commercial and the ag, and then not, not permitted anywhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be mine. I, I would support that.
I would support that.
Any comments from the public about this?
This is why we have these. I'm glad you're sharing your thoughts on this.
Again, Henry A. Hearn from Plymouth, and I live across the street from storage units that were put up. Which Brian approached me before he did it. I couldn't afford to buy the property. And so we talked about doing it. However, there are a couple of issues, because he was supposed to plant enough trees so they weren't really visible from my house, and the trees aren't growing that fast. And he does have flashing lights that come on every time somebody drives through, and then some of them don't go off. They sit there and flash in the windows of our house. So, thinking about having them, I, I would like you to consider what might have to be around them, no matter whether they're, what zone that they are in. They're, they're not bad storage units and, you know, things are pretty good. So I, I don't want Brian to get mad at me. But there was some considerations when he did it, but the biggest consideration was it was his property, and I couldn't afford to do anything to buy it. So, that's my thoughts.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's your opinion on the, the amount of traffic that goes in and out of a facility like that? I mean, is it, I mean, we've had, we, we've permitted a few of these where, you know, residents were concerned that it would be an increase in traffic, and, you know, there was an analysis that, you know, three residences in the same space that would be permitted would have an average of twenty trips per day, and this would actually be less. So like, in theory, do you find that that fits? I mean, if those were all houses?
Probably less. There are a lot of commercial, like painters and people like that that have storage units, so they're in every morning. Construct starts at five in the morning. I don't get up till seven-thirty. So when they start backing equipment up, that goes beep, 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 it's a little, it does wake me up sometimes. Fortunately, it's not where my apartments are, not quite in front of my house most of the time. But there, there's not a lot of traffic through the day. There's more traffic into construct than probably what there is. Some, most weekends, there's a fair bit of traffic in and out. But I don't think it's any more than, if there was twenty houses in there and buildings that are six stories high, there'd be a lot more traffic than what there is at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So we do have, Joseph has in his language here, whether or not we want performance standards. And one of them actually includes minimum setbacks and buffers in excess of a standard setback in certain zones, which would address some of these potential concerns.
Security and lighting are a big issue for these owners, because they wanna protect, they want their customers to feel like they're safe. But I could also see the value of requiring additional buffering so that no light leaves the premises.
Danny Downing from Plymouth. I live at the same place that Henry does, and I just, I wanna reiterate, I'm gonna differ a little, but I wanna reiterate, the light is twenty-four hours a day. And it is bright, like, bright LED light all along that area. Regardless of whether there would be trees there, in the winter, that means nothing. And so it is twenty-four hours of light shining. And so at night, I have great big huge shadows of tree limbs across my bedroom wall and literally have to sleep with an eye mask because it is so bright. Again, it's security. So what are they gonna do? Not have the lights? No, they're going to have the lights. Buffer of the trees, that's fine, except in winter, which is what, nine months out of the year here? And, you know, it's the darkest time, so it's always shining. The, the number of people who come in and out, it may not, it may not be more than residential. It is louder, though, and it is like at twenty-four hours a day. So they come in at night, they have access, like, so people work different shifts. But if they're going to the storage units, they're opening those gates, and they're hauling stuff out or hauling stuff in. And so you have the noise, you have the twenty-four hours of access, you have the bright lights, you have the increased back and, in and out. I, I would discourage allowing it in agricultural zone or, or at least like anywhere near, like, housing. And there's housing in agricultural zones.
So, I mean, would, would you be comfortable, we were talking about a special exception, which basically means you go to the zoning board, you ask them, you, you make your case to them, and they hear, and they hear comments from the public and others about the impact on local residents, and decide based upon those sorts of factors whether or not it would be a bad impact on certain properties versus others?
I don't have enough experience to know whether or not, like, that would help others. You would be allowing it in the industrial, you'd be allowing exceptions in the highway and the commercial, like, I mean, it just seems like that's a lot of territory. Why add agricultural to it? So that's my position. Thank you, and happy to take any other questions if you have any.
Well, I have a question, actually. Do you think if they were evergreen trees, it would make a difference?
For the light, possibly, except then you have zero visibility from the road, and part of the security of the lights is the visibility. And anyone who is crime-aware will tell you, don't build shrubs in front of your house, because that's how criminals hide. So if they're trying to protect their property, I don't think evergreens are going to help.
Are there any other comments? I would like to return to that question about whether or not we even want it in the ag zone.
And again, if anybody on Zoom wants to speak, just raise your hand.
So let's put the hyphen through the ag zone for storage units as well?
How do we all feel about that? I'm okay with that. So you're okay with special exception, but not saying no?
If they, if, thinking that if they were, so someone was to propose it next to a bunch of houses, and that 30-foot setback, as Mr. Ahern spoke, that doesn't do anything. Even though the 30-foot setback is there, but like, the light is still a nuisance and does, you know, changes quality of life.
I would be on the fence on this. In some cases, putting them in the industrial zone is great. I would have no problem with it. It's just, I don't know whether the land is going to be so much more expensive for them to try and make that work. It would take a huge footprint. I can see situations where it would fit in the ag zone, not across the street from someone's house, not at the end of the street, from a neighborhood. I just don't know how that could, it doesn't always mix. And so I have fought with what has, what we've approved over the last three or four years. And then sometimes, they're putting them in a really nice location that housing should be in. So, and we're using up, the only other side of the coin is, it's a great use that is limited in scope, and that in 30, 40, 50 years, it's probably going to be something else.
I would just add one, and then I'll pass on to you. Thinking about the different uses of storage facilities, for contractors, it's often nice to have it fairly close by. For long-term storage, which a lot of people use it for as well, I don't know how close it needs to be to your home. And I guess what I'm getting at here is, if we see fewer storage units in Plymouth, they're going to build them in neighboring towns anyway. And I'm okay with that, exactly.
There are lots of towns around us without zoning where they can put them anywhere they want.
If we, if we put it no use in agriculture, because I know lots of Plymouth has zoned agriculture. How much does that really shrink of where it can actually be built? And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, like we were saying, but.
What would these special exceptions be, as far as, for what, what would you consider a special exception? He wasn't put it at the end of the field, what's down, like, if he has a two-acre, a 200-acre lot, and he must have put him down as far as that, what, I mean, well, how do you clarify that? Well, how's it going to be clarified?
I mean, the impact on residents and such is one of the, Joseph probably has the specific language better at hand than I do.
Six standards.
But there are some specific standards to follow.
Yeah, I can read them if you'd like. So the six standards that the zoning board would review a project against if it was proposed, and it's a special exception use are, the use shall only be those allowed by special exception, the site is in appropriate location and of adequate size, the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, the use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services or facilities, and there will be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located. So those are the six criteria for a special exception, whether it's for storage or any other use.
There are some ideal locations for storage units in the ag zone. I just don't think it should be near residential units or right on top of them.
So a special exception in that case would be appropriate, because if there are houses nearby, that last one would come into play and say, no, we're not going to grant it. But, you know, the ones that, if that's on 3A, is it the Reese family that owns it? That one's actually, there's nothing really wrong with that.
I think the flip side is, it also discourages future housing development.
It does. But I would argue, I mean, I would argue that the 3A and Route 3 are probably not the worst places for those. I mean, not disrespecting people who have homes in those areas, but, you know. No, I mean, my thinking is those areas in town, like, you, the highway commercial district is already zoned to be mixed residential and business. And I actually think that it would make sense to apply that type of zoning to 3A and to 3A out of Plymouth.
So maybe we can just do.
Rather than have it be ag zone, just have it be highway commercial.
No, that makes sense.
So, for the sake of brevity, since we have more to cover still, we can always change our mind next week, oh, we'll get to you as well. We can always change our mind before we get to public hearings and stuff, like, next time we have a work session. It seems like the big sticking point is ag zone, special exception, or just no. And we're going to have a vote on that in a moment, and say what we're going to do for next month, and we can still change our mind next month before public hearings.
Regina Ronaldo, Plymouth resident. This is more of just a curiosity, like, how many storage unit places are in Plymouth already? If that's known, and you've already kind of approved more? I'm just curious, like, a town our size, are there sort of like, just sort of general guidelines? Like, how, how many storage facilities could a town really have?
There's the one that's across from your house, there's the one that's on 3A that owns it by the Reeses, and then there's one actually behind Kirk's.
And there's one on.
And Tenny Mountain Highway, yeah. Further down Tenny Mountain Highway, on the left.
I'm aware of. Plus two permitted.
And then we had, we've had a few that were passed by the board from site plan review. However, one of them at this point is not happening.
But two are still in the window.
Two are still kind of on the window, I think, I'm not even.
It's just an interesting, like, you know, use for a piece of land, and the benefit, you know, is it to our direct community? What is the benefit?
People pay a lot of money to store garbage.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand. I'm just curious, like, you know.
Have you ever seen, like, Storage Wars, where they clean those things? It's just people's, it's like, what you'd have in your basement or attic.
You know, I'm appreciating the conversation and trying to figure out which, which areas are best suited for this kind of facility.
I would say each of the ones, applications we've had recently, has had a lot of residential pushback. A lot of really serious concern about the impact on the neighborhood. And it wasn't a whole lot we could do because we didn't have it as a special exception. If they met our criteria, it was like, that was it.
Right, so this is a step toward kind of addressing some of that.
Last comment on this.
I just, one more thing, and Henry Ahern. Storage in this town is lacking. The one across the street from me has a fairly long waiting list to get into those units. And he just put in seven containers, eight containers, something like that, and expanded it in the direction it wasn't supposed to go. So that's what's happening. The other thing, though, to consider, when we were, you were talking about building and building heights. In a lot of places, those storage facilities are inside buildings, and that cuts down on a lot of the lighting, security, a whole bunch of issues, if they're in a building going up rather than the ground going out. So you might want to think about that, like the vault, which does motorhomes and all that sort of thing. That's a big building, but they do storage in those, too.
We tend to see those in more urban areas, because they're a little bit more expensive to build, I think, than some of the.
There is, but they, they get a lot of money for those things every month, and so, and they're full. I mean, they're, they're all, as far as I know, they're all full, and there's two down in Ashland, they're full.
Fair enough. So let's just.
In the issue of expediency, can I suggest we, we propose, for the sake of our next week, next month's meeting and discussion, that we leave the ag zone as a special exception, and the highway commercial as a special exception for storage, and have them be permitted in the ICD?
I can, I do, last question before we move on. Do we want to have mandated parking spaces?
For parking, for storage?
Yeah.
Why would we need that?
Current storage facilities, none at all, not even like, one for a caretaker potentially, or anything else.
Mandated or optional? I mean, they can always be optional, but I mean, if they're going to have off-site management, why would we mandate it? I mean, they have to have access to get into these units and access.
I mean, it wouldn't be like, more than one or two spaces, probably. The question is, do we want that?
What would be the benefit of mandating that?
So the way that it works currently for other uses in the zoning ordinance, there's a list of uses in the parking table, and each use has a corresponding number of parking spaces. There's also a provision that says, other uses, parking shall be determined by the planning board through its site plan review procedures.
You could do that, and it'd be flexible.
If the board didn't specify, since we're adding a new use, you would either, you could add it to the table and give it a parking number, or you could just leave it as another use and decide ad hoc.
If they have an office or not.
I think that's a good idea.
Fair enough, okay. So, I'm okay with your idea there, Phil. Everyone okay with that? If we change our mind by next time, we can change our mind, but, okay.
And I would ask, just, does the board like the idea of having a list of performance standards? And if so, are the ones that are in the suggestion, do those seem good? Or are there other things that we'd like to see, or maybe like to see removed?
You know, I'm kind of thinking, if it's a special exception, some of those might just come into play anyway, as a way of meeting some of the community requirements. And where it's allowed, I'm not sure we need the buffers, for example. So it might just be okay without that, but I could be wrong. Because, because, can these, select, a select board, no, the other one, the zoning board. Can they put conditions on their approval? Like buffers and stuff? So I would say, if it's already allowed, like, in the ICD or something, I'm not sure they need a buffer. And if it's a special exception, then let the zoning board kind of figure that out. Would that make sense?
So the only other thing I would suggest is that, given the concern we heard about lighting, I would suggest that we consider mandating that any security lighting at a storage facility be on a motion sensor with a dwell time of no more than five minutes. Something like that. Like, you know, it's going to be expensive for them to maintain motion sensors, but at least they go out when nobody's there. They have to be maintained.
Who's going to police that?
So there's enforcement.
But it's enforceable. If it were to be enforced, it could.
If you complained.
If there's a mandate that they be on a motion sensor with a dwell time of no more than five minutes, like, it can be enforced.
And then someone complains. If no one complains, it's not going to be enforced, probably, but.
So there's a performance standard.
That's actually not a bad idea.
So just sort of leave it at, leave it at the lighting, as you described?
All right. Oh, I thought I said, one more, here, one more comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, you can go ahead.
But you raised new, new, new issues, and I just.
Okay, fine, go ahead.
Danny Downing, Plymouth, when it comes to the motion sensors, one, even if they are properly maintained, people come at all hours of the night, they're going to go on. They're offloading those cars, those trucks for an hour. It is bright LED light, so I appreciate the troubleshooting. It's, it's not a realistic solution because of the use, so, and again, it's.
But the use could also be limited in hours, too. You could, you could say, no, access nowhere earlier than 7:00 AM, no later than 9:00 PM.
Especially as a special exception.
Or any, any site plan can require hours of use.
And as another piece, you could require a photometric plan, which is the lighting studies we see sometimes, that show the actual lumen value for the entire site, and you can require those to say, no lumen level at the property line or offsite. It's another way you could, you could regulate it with, through that.
And I think you can also see the close proximity to houses that are around. So if you do the special exception, you can at least.
But even if, I mean, if we have those abilities, then, you know, even if you put one up, then somebody would feel comfortable building a house next to it if there wasn't, if they were sure that there was no offsite light spillage or something along those lines.
I think we might be able to trust this to the zoning board, for the special exception ones. All right, auto service stations in the village commercial. We talked a little bit about this use, which is still allowed, and a little bit of background. Currently, the village commercial, which is the downtown area, we do not allow, like, drive-through services, for example, of any sort. And unfortunately, we don't really have a separation between, like, a fueling station and like, a garage. I know we have some garages down there that many of us probably go to and like, and, including myself. But in terms of especially allowing that expanded use, and I'm not sure it's part of our vision, and certainly fueling stations, which could actually happen, and we talked about some of the scenarios there, it seems like it might just be, be good to not allow that as a permitted use in the downtown area.
Why? Just got to look at it the exact opposite way, don't see, if, if someone was going to put in a fueling station to stand, to our standards, right? Why would that be an impediment to our, to our town?
It doesn't work with the, with the aesthetic or the core of the village, you know, it doesn't work with the, with the, what we want, what we envisioned the village core to be. And then there's two gas stations right down the street, across from Panther Fields, that if you're running out of gas between there, there, between there and the village core and there, you need to plan better.
You can call me up, I'll push you.
But having a gas station in, you know, in our village core, just kind of runs counter of the essence of a New England downtown gazebo.
So the other thing we need to think about is, oh, sorry.
The other part of this is related to the drive-through services, which have been not allowed in the downtown. And that's, they require more curb cuts, and they require more traffic going in and out constantly of those curb cuts. And a gas station would be something very similar in that regard.
Which we need to approve that, though.
And that would be not good for pedestrian-friendly downtown, to have that many curb cuts and traffic through those curb cuts across those sidewalks on a regular basis. That's one of the really big ones.
But if someone came in to get like, a curb cut, wouldn't we need to like, approve that curb cut regardless of like, what they're, what they're doing there?
So my, my concern is that I think we should be considerate of how specific we are with language about this, only because, while I think it's probably smart not to have additional petrochemical gasoline dispensaries in that area, I think it's important to allow for EV charging in that area, primarily because EV charging is, is a destination where you might plug in for a couple hours. It might be 20 minutes, it might be a couple hours. There are opportunities where it's, it's being, it's an asset to the businesses of that, in that zone to have that parking, because then, while, while people are parked and charging, they can, they would frequent restaurants, or, you know, it becomes a destination. So I see that as a compatible use, and I think the town's already thinking about, like, the Green Street lot. And the town would be exempt from that if it were, if we were to put in chargers, but like, if another organization wanted to put in chargers somewhere else, I think that's something we should be flexible.
Can I get clarification from Joseph on this? Typically, wouldn't, and I know our language is outdated at this point, did nothing cover that. Typically, wouldn't, and I know our language is outdated at this point, did nothing cover that.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know how many towns with outdated language have been through this, um, but would an E V charger, like on a stand, on a standard parking space or something where they often are, be included in this definition?
Two parts to that. So first off, um, like you said, governmental uses exempt from zoning, so that wouldn't be applicable. Accessory uses, uh, you know, they, the way that we have viewed this in the past is that an E V charging lot, where it's a lot where the primary use is charging a vehicle, fits under the definition of an auto service station. An accessory charger that's associated with, on the lot of a business, probably would just be an accessory use. So that's kind of, but if it was a lot of land privately owned that had E V charging as the primary commercial use, that probably, because, uh, auto service station does not specifically say only, uh, petroleum, it says used for supply of gasoline or oil or other fuel for propulsion of motor vehicles, which is.
That's, that's broad enough to capture E V charging.
If that were the primary.
Or other liquid fuel, just add another word there.
Yeah, or it could be, or fuel, hydrogen fuel cell or whatever else might come to the market.
Yeah.
I wonder if this might just go along with a couple of words of clarification to a fueling station to exempt electric or to clarify what a fuel is in this definition.
Well, or maybe in that zone, we just want to allow the accessory uses, but not allow a, a facility that's dedicated to that.
Actually, we, we don't, we probably wouldn't want a standalone parking lot just for fueling anyway.
No, I don't think we would.
So there's actually that, yeah.
Not there.
I was gonna say, in terms of impact, typically E V charging is slower and not the high volume of traffic. But, but you're right though, we might allow one either.
It's still your curb cuts, it's still your in and outs, the same thing.
You know, the, the.
Different fuel.
So, so none of them?
The D C fast chargers, um, I've started using recently and like, you're only there for fifteen or twenty minutes. So you're, you're in and out of those pretty quickly, honestly.
Sounds dangerous for the pedestrians. Fuel in a car.
The cars are only there for.
Fuel in a car takes seven minutes of gas and fifteen minutes of electricity, still is dangerous for those people walking by.
It's.
Yep.
More dangerous.
Interesting point.
Yeah, you can't hear.
Okay.
No, I mean, the ones I've been to, the ones I've been to have been in mall parking lots, they've been on the, uh, uh, you know, in, in high traffic areas already anyway, but like.
I didn't think about the electricity part of it.
Yeah.
We ought to consider ha- uh, having a restriction on E V charging stations in flood zones.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about, yeah.
Yeah, that's good land use planning.
Put them in the, uh, well, I was actually across the river anyway, I was, I was in the, the, uh, the ice cream lot.
Ice cream lot, yep, that makes perfect sense.
So, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't certain about why, the why behind this auto service stations in the village commercial zone either. And, and the, talking about curb cuts and thinking about Main Street as a pedestrian and a walkable place, I can see why we would want to prevent that. Because in the few places where, um, there are curb cuts, such as where the Tedeskes used to be or where Step Ladders is now, it is definitely a little bit iffy for pedestrians. And so I can see how this would be helpful for keeping the downtown walkable.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if there's a difference between the auto, like if we can designate between auto service station, like an actual filling station? So I just think like K T M used that, for example. So if, if we did away with no auto service stations in this zone,
Yeah.
K T M burns down and they can't be built in twelve months, well then they can't ever rebuild, you know, because they're a non-conforming law. So, not, just saying, we need to be worried about places burning down, but actually in that area town we do.
It's apparently, it's apparently concerning.
But just like, and that, and that's a designation of, yeah, they're not actually a filling station.
Yeah.
It's a service station.
It's a service station.
Service station.
So that would be, we could amend our definitions to differentiate, you know, an automotive filling station from a auto service station.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to do that?
It would be a change to our definitions.
We could do, it probably wouldn't be very complicated.
No, we would have to just specify, take out the part of the auto service station definition that talks about fueling and then create a separate use that would be auto fueling station or, or something like that. And you could then add, you'd have to then add that back into the table of uses, so you'd have to decide where that would be permitted or not permitted.
If heaven forbid that did happen and, and it was non-compliant, um, is there some sort of special exception situation?
They can rebuild in twelve months.
Variance.
A variance.
A variance, that's enough.
Okay.
Which they'd have to prove hardship.
Which is tough to get.
Which a business cannot financially say, finance, there's no financial hardship. So.
If your business burns down, there's no financial hardship?
Financial hardship is not a criteria for a variance.
Criteria for a variance.
I see, okay.
So it might be their actual hardship, but it's not considered hardship when you're applying for a variance.
Yikes, okay.
But all they have to do is file the building permit within a year and have substantial, you know, undergo substantial development within a certain period of time, like, they can, you know, they, if somebody wants to do that, they probably can.
Do we want to separate these out? Would that be helpful or?
Well, do we want to move for, I mean, if we do, do we want to move forward with limiting fueling stations but allowing service stations in the, is that the goal?
I mean, I don't mind going forward without either.
What, what do you, what do you say?
I can go either way.
You're, you're keeping, you're staying quiet over there.
Talking about this little small area over here?
Yeah.
How many are you gonna put in there?
Right, I know, there's, there's not a lot of, I know, because at this point you have to have underground storage tanks. I mean, there, I don't know that there's enough space to put one in anywhere.
You're gonna dig the streets all up again?
What's that?
Highly regulated.
Well, I, it came up because I was kind of prying Joseph for information about one of the properties. And, uh, he actually mentioned to me that they actually did inquire about this and the possibility of doing this. And I said, oh, that sets off some alarm bells in my head. Like, I wasn't even really thinking about it as a possibility and I was concerned about this property for other reasons. And, uh, so it did come up, as somebody was actually inquiring to the town about this possibility. And it would seem like it might be who of us to actually like.
Right, because I don't remember us ever talking about it before.
I was just checking with Joseph.
You did mention it at one meeting.
The select board.
Our last meeting, yes.
Select board mentioned it recently as well.
And the state would have a big role in whether or not that would happen.
They, they would, but at the same time, if we could just kind of step in and say no.
Okay, so we're gonna.
I mean, if, if you remember, like, do you remember watching the site work for when they put the, the fueling station in at the Common Man on Tenney Mountain Highway? Like, there was a big impact to put the tanks in, the pump island, like, I don't know where you could do that on Main Street. I, I do think this might be a solution in search of a problem.
I, I remember when we had seventeen gas stations on Main Street.
That's a lot.
About one. It doesn't look like anybody's gonna build another one on Main Street.
I could see that happening.
It's not the place for them.
I'd like to say that, um, at the same time, knowing that somebody inquired.
Yeah.
And it, and it might be impossible in the current, like, rules, um, at the state level, but it still kind of makes me a little like.
Yes. I see it as a fairly low priority, maybe something to keep on the agenda for, but I, I don't see a problem with it, but, yeah. I, I think if we're gonna do this, we should differentiate between auto service stations and auto filling stations and maybe remove auto filling stations from the village commercial, but.
Which might just be a good distinction anyway.
Yeah, I think it would be actually, yeah.
Something good practice going forward.
So I mean.
Cause they're often pretty distinct.
Most new gas stations are not gonna be like service stations. I mean, technically, like the,
They used to be.
The Kirks on, the Kirks on North Main is a service station. They have two bays where they could service cars. I don't think they do, but they could. That's a combination service and filling station, but like, most new gas stations is filling station.
Yeah.
So Joseph, can, can you get us some language for our two new definitions? And, um, temporarily, perhaps we can even just keep the use table as is between the two of them, except for those commercial? And then we can tweak it next time if we need to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I say that in expedience so we don't get bogged down and think further.
I can, I can put together a draft of that, for sure.
All right, thank you. All right. Excuse me. So changes to commercial uses in the ag zone. Uh, so a little bit of background on where this comes from. It comes from a couple of different places, stepping back in time a little bit. There was a good amount of feedback that got put into our master plan of twenty eighteen that suggested that, um, there was a desire to preserve the character of the ag zone, including the agricultural and kind of rural residential and broadly residential character of the ag zone by limiting some of the commercial, um, uses of the ag zone. And more recently, we've heard some concerns, including about some of the storage facilities, which seem to be handling separately, but especially about the hotel that was proposed, um, that, you know, you know, there was some concern that, that same hotel, if you could get like Septa going, like, could go anywhere in town almost. And, and we were talking a little bit up, up at our meeting about a month ago, the same for like various commercial strip development and all this sort of stuff. It could go almost anywhere in town. And I think it's certainly sounded at the hotel hearings, but also at other meetings we've had, like, there are a lot of people who are uncomfortable with that level of development, um, in the ag zone, um, that we call an agricultural zone as opposed to a commercial and industrial zone. Um, and that we might want to limit some of the commercial and industrial development that can happen there. And why? Does that limit some of the uses that one would be allowed there? Yes. Um, but considering the purpose of zoning to also prohibit, you know, incompatible uses near one another. If we're thinking about this as an agricultural and residential zone primarily, do we want like big box stores, strip development, hotels going in all over the ag zone? We probably weren't thinking about it much happening, for the most part, not long ago, um, but we've, we are seeing interest in this now. And it seems like it should be addressed. And I, we've heard lots of feedback in the town from people who said it should be addressed. And here we are. So what that would require is changing our table of uses to reflect some of these issues and, or concerns. And the slightly tricky point of this, although I don't know that has to be that tricky, is that if we did that, there are certain parts of the Tenney Mountain Highway, which is mostly at this point no longer agricultural, and it doesn't look like it's going back there. That should probably be brought into the fold of the industrial commercial zone, um, because again, I think that's a kind of, we may be moaning that change, but like, it's the way that part of town is going. And I do see reasons to allow commercial and other development along that zone, that, that corridor there. But the rest of the ag zone, I personally don't see why we should allow some of this sort of development. And again, the master plan and a lot of the feedback we've heard from the public lately and frustration from the public, I think has spoken to this.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I think it's time to protect the agricultural zone like we protect conservation land.
What does that mean for you?
That means, I think, um, filling stations, um, repair shops, auto repair shops.
Come on.
There it is. Auto repair shops, uh, big box stores. I think that's agriculture, I think we need to get back to the definition of agriculture, whether it be tree farming, animal farming, mushrooms, I, I don't know, but agricultural needs to be.
Does that include residential for you though?
It does.
I think the state has a good definition of agriculture.
Who does?
The state.
So.
Do you, are you at all concerned about, I mean, we already have differentiations of density, like, are you, we haven't really talked about that, but like, is, is your vision of resi- of residential use in the agricultural zone, do you feel like it's, do you feel like our current density requirements are appropriate for that area?
Which is one acre or?
I think we stuck with one acre.
One acre, except if you run one sewer.
We're gonna go to forty thousand square feet, but we stuck with an acre, right?
That's D E S.
Isn't that for me?
We did an acre.
Forty-two thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay.
But, no, we were trying to go to like.
It has water and sewer, I think it's forty thousand square feet.
Okay, so slightly more dense.
Yep.
At two thousand feet, square feet, excuse me.
I think that's okay. I don't want to see it any more than that, any dens- more dense.
I think when we talked about this in the past, you know, my thinking was that, you know, a few years ago, we talked about changing zoning and we, we, we talked about making lot sizes bigger in the ag zone. My thinking at the time was that if you want to encourage density in some parts of town, you have to discourage density in other parts of town. But I think we've effectively done that when we, this, in this past year with the, the increases to density in the other zones. So, you know, there's, there's still differentiation, differentiation in my mind. And I, I think we've kind of accomplished some of that already in a way that still allows for, uh, more opportunity for development of affordable housing. So I, I don't feel like we need to look at increasing lot sizes on the ag, in the ag zone at all, but I am concerned about the uses. And I think we've heard a lot of concern about incompatible uses and, and, yeah. And I certainly don't want to discourage agricultural use in any way, you know, I, if anything, I almost think we should identify agriculturally valuable land and potentially protect that at a, at a higher level. But, you know, that would involve kind of a new zone.
I mean, I think, I think at this point, if we can like make some changes to the use table
Yeah.
and just draw some, a few changes to the map, just to kind of at least bring Tenney Mountain into the fold, Tenney Mountain Highway that is, into the fold of the I C D.
Yeah.
It definitely is gonna require changes out on Tenney Mountain Highway. I mean.
I mean, a lot of Tenney Mountain Highway is, on the riverside, is ag zone.
That's agricultural, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Market basket in the ag zone, just like, it makes my brain explode.
And it's just, it just kind of all blew up and it, nothing kept up with itself. So, you know why it happened and it just did. But now we really need to correct it before it gets worse because things are moving in, they're moving in fast, things are changing. And there just seems to be this overwhelming want to develop Plymouth, um, from people outside of the state. And I just feel like we, we really, we really need to protect it.
Okay.
So, so does that mean we're taking industrial out of the agricultural zone?
Why do you ask? I don't know, I don't know if we are or not. I ask, I, why, why, why?
When I went to Tenney Mountain, originally did the research, there were other boards that put that in place and under the state definition. The reason why you have an industrial label on agriculture zone is because the terrain here, the ledge is a couple of twelve, eighteen inches. So by having the industrial, by having industrial label on agriculture, it allows the farmers or people that own the land, they don't have to abide by federal codes such as making sure you're four to six feet down or below the frost line, you can lay high voltage cable. Same with infra, any type of infrastructure, all the fiber infrastructure, it's only twelve inches below the ground up there. So if you put that industrial part out of it, it.
Could we put that in the?
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Could we put that?
Informational.
Could we put that in the overlay?
Yeah.
If that's a concern.
That's, yeah, I'm wondering about that.
Cause I, I could see definite reasons to limit industrial next to agricultural and residential land.
Is it industrial already special exception in the ag zone and permitted in the I C D?
It is a special exception in agricultural.
Yes.
I'll have to check on the I C D.
It is permitted in the I C D.
So if we extended I C D rulings or, um, permitted things you could do in the current I C D, further along three A, for example, you would actually bring that.
I mean, I wasn't thinking of going that far, but I, I could listen, you know.
Wherever.
What about, what about applying the highway commercial in that area, which already allows a lot of that stuff, has a little bit more flexibility?
Highway commercial.
It's the, yeah, the H C. It already allows a lot of that stuff, some, a lot of it's permitted or, if, if, the, the highway commercial in the, in the I C D are pretty close, there are a couple differences about, you know, what's permitted or special exception, like childcare centers are different.
Phil?
Sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I don't want to, in October, let this balloon into a total zoning rewrite.
It's a good time to do it.
And I think there are real substantive changes we can make right now and further ones we can make along the line to continue to tweak this as necessary. But I think it might be helpful, given some of what we've seen recently in this town, to make some changes now. Get, make some incremental changes and we'll probably need to follow it up. And that's what happens in zoning. And I don't think we, we want to get too bogged down in changing like a bunch of different zones around.
Okay.
I think it might just be too much right now.
I agree.
I'd be interested in even just kind of coming through the uses allowed in the ag zone. Together, just coming, yeah, going down the list.
If you want to leave that?
I'll lead it.
Can I ask a quick question real fast?
Yeah.
I was sorry, I was sorry for my lack of knowledge. Um, I C D isn't overly. I C D isn't overly correct?
No.
Okay.
It's a zone.
Okay.
I C D is industrial-commercial development, and that is mostly along Tenney Mountain Highway, if you have that map, it's the blue area.
I'm just trying, I'm, I'm trying to square the circle with, cause we have the, you know, uses for residential, and then municipal, and then, and commercial, and then like, and then I C D appears to be in like a little cherry over, I'm just trying to figure out like how that all functions together, but we don't need to do that right now, I apologize, let's go through your thing and then.
Okay, so I'm looking at the zoning ordinance, and I'm looking at page fourteen, which is in the table of uses, it's the commercial, most of the commercial. And so the, the.
I colored this, I had a colored-in version of this somewhere.
You have colored in ver- oh.
And I lost it. Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, so, the first thing that's on the list, which is permitted in the ag zone, is an auto service station. No from Sue?
Hyphen.
So we have two options, we can move it to hyphen, which is not permitted, or special exception.
Hyphen.
Hyphen.
Auto service station in the ag zone? You don't wanna allow it at all?
We're asking, what?
My only, my only concern, actually, auto service station as opposed to.
Refueling station.
My only concern would be, like, refueling, like, farm equipment or something?
Yeah.
But I think that's a, I think that's a use.
That's an accessory use.
It's an ancillary to agricultural use, I don't think you needed that.
So can I just say something? The beginning of the meeting, we had a lot of people here, and I know they were representative of the agricultural zone. We went through a lot of stuff, they have petered out, I really, I don't know how we're gonna do this, but a lot of those people, I know this is information they wanted to be part of.
Yeah, I, I.
So how are we gonna handle this? Because if we do a lot of changes tonight, and we bring it to another meeting, I mean, it's just.
I would say, next meeting.
This is gonna be the same rhetoric that we had a few years ago.
Next meeting, we flip it over, and do it in the opposite order.
So we do the ag stuff at first?
Yeah. And do it the exact opposite order.
Because there was, the place was full, and that's what it was.
I noticed that, I was.
And I, I, I was gonna say something in the beginning, and I didn't, and I'm sorry I didn't, because this is the information these people wanted to be part of.
Yeah.
I will say that I'm always surprised at how many, how much feedback I get from people who said, I watched the meeting online and so.
I know, but this is not a group, there's a lot of these people, we're not that group.
They can't provide feedback, but, you know, the next meeting, I'm hoping anybody who is here that left will at least watch and bring feedback to us next time.
I don't think we need to make decisions, I just wanna have a conversation about the uses.
Yeah, I agree.
To get a feel.
Yeah, no, I agree, I just wanted to throw that out so people are aware of it.
I was thinking about that too.
Before you start, Neil, do you have a quick?
You know, I, I just made an observation, we got a section of highway, Route three A, and a section of twenty-five going to the Romney Line, that's heavily developed industrial-commercial. And that really ought to be included in that I C D zone.
Yeah, maybe we do.
That's something we should consider.
I agree.
So there's a redrawing.
Yeah.
And there is some farmland out there.
I was reprimanded for bringing that up previously.
There is some farmland out there.
It's a big change. John was right, you know, it's, I, I agree that we should think about that.
There's some really gorgeless farmland out there, too.
And if that's like too complicated this year, to think about farmland versus I C D sort of stuff.
Yeah.
We can always be a little bit more conservative this time around, and maybe put it on the agenda for next year or something. You wanna go through the list?
Yeah, I'll just go through the list, I won't like pause, I'll just read, and then we can maybe discuss.
Pause long enough for us to say something.
Okay, I'll pause. So auto service station?
Nope.
No.
So we're gonna have differing opinions here.
Yeah.
Cause you already raised a question about that, didn't you, Mike?
Yeah, I would be concerned about the drastic change from permitted to not permitted, where they'd have to get a variance to put a gas station on Route three between Ashland.
Or a service station.
And Plymouth, or a service station, when, you know, there might be a good spot for that, for that, cause there is nothing on that side of town, really.
I mean, I go to a service station in the ag zone on Bell Road.
So, I, I, I think that's a little drastic, to just say no, but.
Okay, special exception?
Well, that's on that side of Tenney Mountain Highway, that's a lot of possibilities over there, so.
And it could be a special exception.
Tough one.
Yeah, I mean, the special exception could allow for some review there, right?
I'm open to that.
Yeah, okay.
Bank is the next one.
I don't really need a bank in the.
It is hard.
It's because we've got so much on Tenney Mountain Highway that's in ag zone.
Imagine, imagine Tenney Mountain Highway is not the ag zone anymore.
No, I mean.
But it is.
But it, that should be part of this, if we're gonna make this use table change, that needs, redrawing that map needs to go along with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to envision that, like, the, the I C D should be bigger.
Yes.
But we need to be defining what should be in the I C D, not what we want to be where. Like, I think we should think about, yes, at some point, we need to redefine the I C D, and to include more, but I don't think we should be, just because of that, like, I think we can fit the banks into that zone.
I, I think it would be helpful to imagine this as an I C D that includes Tenney Mountain Highway corridor.
Yep.
And say, what do we want in ag, what do we want in I C D? And if it's currently ag on Tenney Mountain Highway, I would not let that change our minds here, cause then it'll change nothing.
So pretend it's.
So we, I think, I think we need to redraw this map.
Yep.
Together with.
I see what you're saying, I, I understand what you're saying.
And keep in mind, banks are permitted in the other four zones, the C I, the B C, the H C, and the I C D, like, I don't think they need to be in the ag zone.
I don't think so, yeah.
I'm, I'm comfortable with talking about eliminating that one. Childcare center is permitted?
I'm okay with that.
Seems fine to me. Any other thoughts?
Goes along with residential use.
Residential use of home, yep.
Yeah.
There's a, something called commercial service, which I had question marks next to, cause I really don't know, it seems like it encompasses a lot of things.
It does.
Commercial service encompasses a lot, that's, that's the best way to put it, so it encompasses a business where service is provided.
Okay.
So, we've traditionally said, storage units, you're providing storage as a service commercially, but also a barber shop, also a.
Dry cleaner.
Dry cleaner, you know, it's a very wide range that, that fits in that, it's basically, you know, it's kind of on the line between, it's not an office per se, but it's also not a retail facility, it's kind of a, the in-betweens, like a barber shop, or traditionally storage, unless that's removed out.
See, I'm actually kinda curious about this, and I know I'm the one who wants to, like, as much as anyone here, like, eliminates some of the uses from the ag zone, I wonder if we can distinguish scale? And say, like, a mom and pop store might be okay, but like, something really big is not? And so maybe we could even split up commercial uses a little bit between something you might want near a residential neighborhood, versus something you definitely do not.
Didn't you just say you didn't want a whole rewrite of zones right now?
Well, we're talking about the uses and becoming more specific, I think, about the uses?
I, I don't think I have a whole lot of those, but this is one of the ones that I really, I, I can imagine myself kind of splitting up into two.
So half stuff, can we do like a special exception for that, you know, for commercial services?
Oh, for like where we're at now?
Yes.
It might just be a special exception, and we can always redo the definition later.
Yeah. Drive-through restaurant?
No.
No.
Not permitted.
Drive-through service?
No.
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 We're saying, going from permitted, we're thinking of saying not permitted.
Not permitted.
That's, yeah, or, or whatever you feel is best.
Drive-through restaurant, you would not want in the agricultural zone.
Not correct.
I personally would not want that, no.
Like, what does the agricultural zone mean to us?
Not Taco Bell. As much as I want a Taco Bell in this town.
You've got your Domino's.
I, I'm so stoked about that, okay, buddy?
Stoked about the Domino's.
One of us.
Need cheap, good pizza, but that's a different conversation, not for the planning board.
The good part's the problem, anyway.
Adequate pizza.
Okay, so the next two are special exception, it's fuel storage and funeral establishment?
No for fuel storage.
Funeral, special exception?
I mean, that could be an accessory use.
Sorry, and, and I don't know.
As an accessory use, I'm okay with it, but not as a primary, ah.
There's, there's one fuel storage facility on, on three A already, if you think about it, there's a.
And it's not a problem, I'm not sure.
It, it's existing.
It's existing already.
So my, my, my vision is that I think we should be having the I C D or the highway commercial cover that area anyway, so like, I, I, I would support not allowing fuel storage in the ag zone, but I think those layer, those areas should not be treated as.
So is that underground fuel storage, or just fuel storage period?
Does not matter.
It's a primary use. It's a primary use.
It's a primary use, okay, so skid tanks for the farming equipment and whatever.
That's accessory use.
That would be allowed, yeah.
So this, so this table of uses is primary uses?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I think, I, I think we should, if, if we need to revisit our definition of agriculture, I think we should redefine it to allow for a broad range of support services for agriculture. Like, I don't think prohibiting fuel storage as a primary use should affect the ability of, of, of somebody to keep, you know, an above-ground storage tank for fueling equipment on a farm.
So that's, so both those could still be S E's, or no?
Fuel storage and funeral? I'm not sure.
Funeral, I wouldn't mind as a special exception.
No, I wouldn't either.
It sounds like Phil might be going for no on the fuel storage, I think I, I might be in agreement, as long as we can expand the zone a little bit, the I C D zone.
If we're talking about, you know, as a primary use, I would say, yeah, fuel storage does not need to be in the agricultural.
Right?
But, as a primary use.
Yeah.
As a primary.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, with that.
So, no.
Well, I mean, that's what farmers.
It's an ancillary use to, I mean.
You can still do that.
Well, no, farmers need to be able to buy their fuel, that's part of all of agriculture.
And, and we'll get, we'll get to the public in a moment.
But that's not your primary use.
Right.
But he's saying, but he's saying they're gonna need someplace to buy it that needs it for, it needs to be a primary use, like, they gotta go someplace to get it to store on their property for, for their tanks, and so.
It could be a special exception, I mean, I, I'm not totally opposed to.
Do, do commercial fueling stations that sell diesel, are maybe not sufficient for what a farmer needs, if, if, I mean, or, or, I mean, you can have an above-ground tank and have somebody deliver it to a farm if you need it, right?
We've got a couple people willing to, can we open this part to public, so they can comment?
I think we wanna go through the list first.
Let's just get through the list, I'll put a star next to fuel storage, and we can come back to it. Hotel motel, that was one, we have a no.
I would say prohibited.
No, no.
Nope.
Okay.
So is that gonna be?
I was open to maybe different scales, but.
Hotel motel, is that gonna be special exception?
That is permitted.
Prohibited.
It's permitted right now, and so.
It's permitted in the V C, the H C, and the I C D.
So you're saying, strike it from agricultural?
I am, I would, yeah.
We have other forms of.
We heard the public talk.
Yes.
That can be smaller.
Okay.
Like, if someone wants a B and B or something, like, whatever, sure.
We have, we have provisions for rooming houses or tourist houses.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay. Outdoor recreation?
That's fine.
Permitted.
Totally fine. Indoor recreation?
I would say permitted.
I'm not sure what that means.
Special exception.
What if somebody wanted to put up like, uh, one of those giant balloon houses and have a turf field inside, like, on, at the, at the old fairgrounds or something like that?
I'd say they go for a special exception, cause it could mean a lot of different things.
Yeah.
S E, okay.
S E is how I would feel about that.
All right.
S E, so special exception right now, junkyard and lumberyard are both special exceptions at the moment?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Anyone feel differently?
Okay.
Uh, permitted office?
I would say special exception.
So office as a primary use?
Commercial, yeah, like a.
A commercial office.
There's gonna be a lot of people with offices.
We, we are, we already, I mean, I, I see it as overlining with commercial service, like, it, it's very similar to that, and we, we said special exception for that.
Okay, fine.
I mean, I would say.
I, I, I think it's a move in the right direction anyway, to, what we're talking about here.
At least it allows a butters to have input with the Z B A.
Yeah.
Yep.
If there are concerns about that specific location.
And I'm okay with some compromises here, you know.
It, it doesn't prevent someone from having, I mean, home occupations are different, you, anybody can have a home office, if it's not, if it doesn't stand out, you know, it doesn't prevent you from having an office in your house.
Yeah. Hope not.
If it's, you know, those are defined already separately.
Special exception?
That's fine.
For office, I'm okay with it.
Personal wireless communication facilities?
That is a cell tower that is regulated, so.
That's why I would say anywhere.
Up to the, you know, but that has a very particular section to the zoning, and that's why it has the, the footnote.
The three.
So, I, there are state statutes that I don't know offhand that deal with how towns must treat personal wireless communication facilities, so I would say, we would need to do more recen- I would need to get more research done and get some information on that one, if folks wanted to change it. There may be some changes we could do, but I, I just don't know what exactly those state statutes say, because I know they do somewhat curtail how much you can regulate.
So I would say we just leave it for now, and then readdress it later.
Yeah. I'm comfortable with that. Uh, special exception, printing and publishing?
Let's leave it. Mike, I'm expecting you're gonna speak up if you object to any of these.
I, I have always said the ag zone people are receptive to some changes, I would love to hear what the public has to say.
We'll get there soon, yep.
I, I can, I have some concerns about a few.
Okay.
Private club, special exception?
Sure.
Again, don't really know what that means.
Uh, think about the Owl Brook. Owl Brook is a private club. It's a.
Golf club?
No, 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 no.
It's a, it's like.
What am I thinking? The, the shooting club?
Fishing game club?
Fishing game.
This is in the zoning ordinance?
Right, are there copies of there?
No.
There was a stack on the front table. I don't know if there are any left up there.
It's online. Sorry. So, yeah, I mean, there, I mean, private clubs can basically do, they might require a site plan, but oftentimes nonprofits can basically not bring in commercial people.
No?
All right.
Restaurant is permitted.
I would.
Special exception, I, I can go for now with the compromise.
We, we already said no to drive-through restaurant. Do we want a sit-down restaurant?
I can imagine in some cases it might work and in some cases not, and.
I, I could say it being compatible with residential use.
Yeah. Special exception.
All right.
I wanna eat someplace close to home.
Which is softer. I was starting to thinking no.
Retail sales are permitted?
This is one of those ones I wouldn't mind splitting in the long term.
Mm.
Between like scale of retail sales.
Mm-hmm.
Cause there's a difference between a Walmart and like your next door, like, general store or something.
Jewelry shop or something, yeah.
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 Your bakery?
So maybe for now, special exception, maybe looking forward, we can start to rewrite some definitions.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be a good temporary solution?
Yes.
I think it would be, yeah.
Yeah.
And we could put a star, like.
Start to look, look into it in the future?
Yeah. Uh, oh, special exception as a sexually oriented business?
I think we should leave that.
You got more definitions of this than our definitions.
It's the only place we have to, I think we have to allow them somewhere and that's the only place we allow them.
A special kind of, a special kind of agriculture.
I don't think we can. I don't think we can explicitly prohibit them. Explicitly discriminating. Somehow.
Any else feel differently?
Put them in the industrial commercial. Get them out of the ag zone, put them in that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
This is the first thing you're trying to get rid of, rid of in the ag zone.
Can we, can we create a new zone that's only online? Limit them, limit them to that?
Yeah, I'd like to see a negative on that for us.
I'm fine with that. I'm, I think we have to let it.
Special exception on the ICD.
Whatever, like, it's fine with me.
That's fine with me. Is that fine with everyone else? All right.
I forget what we say about that.
I, so I'm gonna move that to ICD, SE, okay. Okay, permitted as a theater?
That's, we haven't gotten there yet. I, I put my suggestion down.
Seems like a.
I'd love to have more theaters in town, but not there.
Yeah, I don't know.
We're still getting there.
Tourist home, that's like a.
Uh, permitted as a tourist home?
Is that a B and B?
Or is there a definition about?
Yeah, what is tourist home, yeah.
Tourist home is a essentially what you might think of as a traditional bed and breakfast. Let me, let me read the definition though, because it is a little bit particular.
Was it in the zoning?
Yep, it is, and it is a, uh, a building or part thereof other than a hotel or motel where sleeping accommodations are provided for transient guests with or without meals and which also owner occupied. Doesn't say which is also owner occupied, but we've always interpreted that should have an is, so it's an owner occupied, traditional bed and breakfast.
Is, is rooming house defined?
Rooming house is also defined, and a rooming house is a little different. That is, um, considered.
That always sticks out in my brain that we could define that, but I'm not sure where it falls in.
Yeah, so it says, it's actually considered a residential use, not a commercial, um, and they're not, uh, tr- I think that the differentiation really is that they're not like these transient, uh, one-night rental.
Yeah, that's a boarding house, right?
Yep, so but a, a rooming house is any residential dwelling other than a hotel or motel in which living accommodations without individual kitchen facilities are rented to at least five, but not more than sixteen non-transient guests. A boarding or lodging house shall be deemed a rooming house. So that is the difference, is that a tourist home is transient and its owner occupied. A rooming house is non-transient.
I got a, I got a question. Uh, not to be on the stupid side, but is this something that's mandatory right now that we're trying to, this is how it's worked for the agricultural and the ICC? This is.
Yeah, this is our current zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're seeing what should be changed and that's what, okay, so.
We're proposing to change that.
Was that a town?
We're proposing to change these, these, these things.
You think we could make it special exception?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
A tourist home?
Tourist home.
That's, that's where I'm at, yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's.
I could see it working, but I could also see some concerns potentially though.
Yeah, I could see some concerns as well.
Put another special exception and.
What, what was the resolution on theater? Did we say?
Uh, no.
No?
No, okay, all right, I'm okay with that.
Take it, take it right out.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was what I had to, I, I had my own notes and.
I should be writing this in pencil because these are all non-permanent changes.
Joseph's gonna have clean copies for us.
Joseph, I think, is working diligently to take notes on this too.
I'm sure he is.
Yeah.
Okay, so special exception on tourist home?
We have a couple more?
Yeah, we have a couple more. Uh, special exception on truck terminal.
The truck terminal's not defined in the zoning ordinance, but there is a generally accepted definition. Usually it's kind of a inter-truck facility. It's, it's kind of a cross between a truck stop and a warehouse. You have these less-than-truck load, uh, shipments that come in and they might drop off a partial load and another truck might come and collect that. It's kind of, uh, it, it's not really a warehouse, uh, but it's also probably going to provide some kind of, uh, minimal services, you know, to truck drivers and also maybe servicing of the truck. Um, and also some space for switching loads particularly sort of between trucks, but it's not like an Amazon warehouse.
Fuel station.
It could, yeah, absolutely, fuel, fuel too. I had to research that one because I didn't know what it was either.
It potentially has a special exception. I could possibly have agricultural uses.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Like, it maybe could, but it maybe could not. So maybe a special exception?
Yeah, what if it was for like one's business where they just had like trucks and equipment and stuff coming and going? Would that also be concerned? Truck terminal where they store their trucks and such?
I would think so.
I think it would be.
Are you thinking of, of your grandfather's place?
No.
No.
I was. That's the place I was thinking of.
I'm thinking of the application we have.
Isn't he, isn't he on 3A, so?
Oh, yeah.
The, the, I, I would, I wouldn't envision that as a, he's got, kinda got like a warehouse and he's got multiple trucks parked outside. Like, I was envisioning that as like, that's a truck terminal in my mind. Yeah, I actually.
He pulls in, he, sometimes he unloads, sometimes he parks, sometimes.
I see that as a truck terminal.
So it's already a special exception.
I was, I was thinking about our application on BCHL, like, would that be, even though they applied as auto repair?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Um.
It could be a truck.
But he, he was also talking about doing other site work there and storing materials and potentially crushing.
Yeah, let's not get too.
I know.
Okay, so.
We can't talk.
That's, so that's where my mind was.
So special exception?
Special exception, I think, yeah.
Yes. For truck terminal, so, so the truck terminals are already.
Already special.
Special exception in the other zones, like, I wondered if, if it's necessary in the ag zone. Like, I do think there should be other areas. I think the.
I mean, could we be unloading and trading off like bales of hay or some large thing like that?
Yeah.
I think that can happen on a farm without.
Yeah, but that's not a, that's not.
On a dedicated use.
Fair enough, okay.
You know, I, I think they're, they're still allowed in the village commercial, the highway commercial, and the, and the ICD. I, I would be, I would be okay with no for truck terminal.
I'd be okay with no or special, either way.
Recognizing that any existing are going to be continued to be used. But I mean, new truck terminals in the ag zone, I'm not sure that's necessary.
Like an SD's building, like SD's freight building, like.
Ross Express trucking.
Individuals sitting around this table just have no idea of the full content of what that could mean. I think for now, I'd just say leave it as special exception.
I think some thought needs to be put into it. You're absolutely right. I'm, I'm. Can we just keep it the same where it is?
You know, I.
I'd be okay with that.
I'm, I'm gonna say special exception as well.
I'm okay with that.
Let's stay with it.
I think it needs some discussion, but I do think.
Thinking about other things that are happening in town and where they should, they shouldn't be in the ICD.
If we have more information next month, great. If not, we can just leave it a special exception. I don't think it'll be in the world.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, permitted is the vehicular sales and repair, no?
I would say special exception. I mean, there already is.
Well, so what's the difference between vehicular sales and repair and the auto service station?
Good question. So vehicular sales and repair, uh, of course has a sales component. It can be sale, it's actually defined as sales or repair, uh, in the definition, so it, it could be an auto dealership or it could be a major repair agency because auto service station, when it describes vehicle maintenance, says it's not a major repair agency, uh, so auto service.
Interesting.
So Honda dealership that has a repair station?
Probably is a vehicular sales and repair.
I'd say no.
I'd say no.
But also car, any car dealership is also vehicular sales and repair.
Okay.
You got tractor repairs.
Yeah, well, tractor supply or.
Well, I think we are, we still have the, what did we list the, uh, the other repair station, service station as?
Service station is as special exception?
So we still have service station, but on a smaller scale as special exception.
If someone came in, was working on small tractors.
I think that's.
You mentioned, uh, industry shops.
That's a service station. That's a service station which you can get a special exception on.
Or, or a commercial service even, which is special exception.
It sounds like this is a much larger scale we're talking about with.
I would think so too. I think vehicular sales.
And tractor, right? You see all those orange cabos, right? You wanna see something on family and looking like that?
You usually see all that in an agricultural area. You don't see it in an industrial commercial zone.
I mean, I, I would consider that, like, I, I wouldn't expect to not see that on, on Tenny Mountain Highway somewhere.
It's permitted in ICD.
That would be a better place. Yeah, I mean, it's, I was gonna say it's permitted in ICD and.
Highway commercial.
Highway commercial.
And we have to think about none.
Oh, I'm not saying it shouldn't go in those other two zones. I'm just saying.
Well, I, I think the point of zoning is that, like, we, we want to encourage it in certain areas, but in, but you do that by discouraging it in other areas.
I mean, and we're trying to.
I, I, in my perspective, I think that, that a lot of people would.
We're trying to discourage conflicting uses.
Right.
And remember, it's the primary use.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm well aware, I don't.
I would advocate to not permit it because I'm assuming that a vehi- I mean, we already have a few, a few vehicular sales on Tenny Mountain Highway and if there needs to be more there, it could go there, but I wouldn't wanna see it on ag land.
Yeah.
Personally.
It's getting late. We can fur- we can further discuss next week if we change our mind.
Their consensus? Okay. Start that one. Warehouse, special exception, and wholesale business, special exception. Those are the last two.
You know, I could see where they could be useful in the ag zone, and I could see where they couldn't, so maybe a special exception could just work.
They're still special, they're special.
No, no, I know.
Leave them as is.
Leave them as special.
I think leave them as is.
All right, that's it. We're done with that.
We do have to talk about the map, but before we get there, um, are there public comments?
That leaves two permitted uses. You're allowed to do childcare center and outdoor recreation.
Commercially.
We could add, we could add.
Or commercial uses, it's not.
Commercial, yeah, there's other uses allowed.
Oh, no, commercial service. Oh, yeah, never mind.
You can do residential stuff.
I.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I would just, Bruce Ahearn again from Plumbeth, on your, things that you're starting to prohibit in the ag zone, I would, uh, consider what an agricultural business might want to be able to do. I'll start off with the storage, fuel storage. Uh, Mr. Yeton ought to know that it may be beneficial for a farmer to be able to buy his fuel in really large bulk so that what he uses on his farm is much cheaper, but then also be able to sell it, uh, to other people, um, in the area. So, to allow him to continue his agricultural business. The same thing with a hotel motel. You, agritourism is big business nowadays. He might wanna put in a small hotel or a bunch of, uh, little cottages on his farm so he could get involved with agritourism. Uh, your outdoor recreation, might wanna put in putt-putt golf course. If he's got this agritourism, he might wanna put something like that in. Uh, indoor recreation, there's all sorts of things that you might wanna put on a farm to encourage people to show up there, uh, to sell his, whatever he's producing. Uh, office, you might wanna have a building where you could, uh, get two or three other people in offices to, uh, come in and help support so that he can continue to do his agricultural business. A restaurant, if he's producing, uh, uh, a garden, you know, growing vegetables, he might wanna have a farm-to-table restaurant in his area. So when you start going from permitted to not permitted.
Special exception.
I, I was.
Well.
Any others are special?
I'll say if we can clarify.
Fuel storage, you said prohibited, so, I mean, there's.
Restaurant, we said special exception.
Restaurant is special exception, office is special exception.
And, and keep it.
Outdoor rec is allowed.
Well, let's finish here.
Yeah, no, okay.
What, what I'm getting at is before you go prohibiting stuff in the agricultural zone, you need to talk to people who do agriculture and research it and not go to prohibited, uh, without real due consideration of what that's gonna do to some of the people in the agricultural zone.
I, I, I do agree with that, and I think this is one of the reasons we tried to leave a bunch of them as special exceptions, because we could also see places where they really couldn't work, depending on how they happen. And this would give us, the zoning board to kind of deference to, say, what you're proposing as this use works and what you're proposing doesn't work for the community, and it gives a chance to have a little bit more of a fine-toothed, not just yes or no, but yes in some conditions.
That's fine, but several of these things you went to prohibit it, so that's, that's why I'm mentioning it.
The fuel we did and the fuel I could.
With a star.
With a star, cause I, I can imagine where that could go somewhere else.
Can, can I respond to one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I, I think, I, I understand a lot of your concerns and I can understand how somebody in agriculture would wanna have a lot of those uses, but keep in mind, these are primary uses. What you're talking about is a primary agricultural use and any of those things could be permitted as ancillary uses to an agricultural primary use.
Well, I could put a ho- small hotel on my farm because.
I, I don't, I mean, if, if, if what you're proposing is, is, if, if, if Longview Farm wants to have agritourism and the, and put in cottages so people can come have a weekend of picking vegetables, like, I don't, I don't see that as something they couldn't bring in for site plan approval. That's subs- that's secondary to the primary agricultural use. You know, fuel storage as an ancillary use on a farm is not prohibited by us saying that you can't have a primary use as fuel storage. You know what I mean? Like, so, so everything that we're, we're saying is primary uses, special exception, like, there are gonna be other uses where like, yeah, that might be okay on a farm where they're doing other things where they might need, you might need a warehouse on a farm.
Basically, you can't just buy a plot of land and just plop a restaurant on there. That's what we're putting as special exception. But if you have a plot of land, like you're doing a farm-to-table, and the main purpose of that is you're growing, you know, you're growing things, yeah, you can put a building on there to serve as a farm-to-table restaurant. That's a secondary use.
Or, or if you want just a restaurant, what we're talking about so far is actually special exception anyway.
Yeah.
So you can just go and ask permission, and if it seems reasonable.
Yes.
In that circumstance, then yes.
I appreciate you raising these concerns. This is healthy discussion.
It is, it is.
And I like bringing them up.
Okay, but, I mean, just take the restaurant.
Sure.
As a farmer, I'm not a chef. But I might wanna have, I know somebody.
Yeah.
That wants to buy a plot of land, put in a restaurant on it. My vegetables are half a mile down the road. I don't have to ship my produce to Concord or Manchester or somewhere else. There are uses of these things that if you're prohibiting them in the agricultural zone, can, could end up having a big effect on the agricultural zone, and you need to consider all, all aspects of it rather than just, well, we don't want a restaurant in the agricultural zone.
I appreciate that, and I think, like, the restaurant's a good example, I think, because I could imagine a restaurant like you're saying and going for approval to the, um, zoning board and getting an approval as a special exception. I could also imagine somebody trying to put in a Taco Bell next door to somebody's house and getting, getting rejected.
I would like the record to show I am okay with Taco Bell being on my, by my house.
Thank you, Bruce.
Taco Bell wants to put it by my house, I, yes.
Would you be okay with Taco Bell next to your house?
Yes, I just said that.
I don't know, man. I don't think I could do that.
I don't, I couldn't do that.
Are there?
Would you share a septic system with Taco Bell?
Phil, it's getting late. Um, do you have a comment, Brad?
Yeah, I, I gotta be straight with anyone. I, personally, I never realized there was so much involved as far as agriculture goes or what you can have and what you can't have. I mean, and, well, it's that. Everyone knows I got a business, I got a towing business and tire business, and it sits on the agricultural. It's not a big booming. So this is sort of all, I mean, I knew there might have been some, never realized there's this much. It's been an ongoing battle for a while about what's happening, and like Dick Humphries right next, he's got his Autobuy shop right next to me. So I'm trying, trying to figure out where I would fit in this situation, because I was told once, I, when someone told me, oh, this is agricultural, I'm like, I didn't realize mine was agricultural. I always thought agricultural was all sealed, farmland, like, yeah, this is stuff, I didn't realize it went into the wooded areas. So anyway, I'm just sort of seeing this as a whole new thing and my, I'm wondering how it would be if I've had something, and I've been doing this for twelve, fourteen years. There's a little bit more to this whole situation that, that back when Brian was here and Brian could tell you the whole thing, and so anyway, but I just, um, so it's, this is all new to me, you know, and I'm trying to figure out how I would fit in this and how, how you, how, if someone's been doing this, has been, has had this business going, what, how's that affects?
If you've been doing this as a permitted use and we change the zoning, you can keep doing it as a permitted use. It does prevent you from expanding and certain things like that.
It becomes a non-formal use, but you can continue it.
Yes.
No one's gonna get shut down.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering how they, how.
It just means you can't expand really in any significant way, um.
And if someone.
And you couldn't do a new, new use.
Yeah.
Like that.
You got most of mine, so. I, I've got a few though.
Yep.
One, uh, office.
Yep.
In what is now one of my rental units, for years I had an office in there, and I don't think the guy that was, uh, doing, uh, computer programming. So having an office in a building like that in the ag zone, I don't think is a problem, and I, it should be a permitted use. I have an office that I've sold computers out of for fifty years at my house, and I, it's not in my house though. It's in the bar, so that's, it's separate from being in the residence. And I, I understand that it's okay because I've had it for so long, but having that type of, so I, it's a sales, I've sold computers, done computer consulting, had people there in the ag zone, so looking at it needs to be looked at as a scale of use rather than just saying no offices, so.
Well, I, would you be okay, I mean, currently we're talking about.
Well, you're a special exception for offices which now I've gotta go through a whole bunch of hoops in order to get permission to do it.
But is that, that's not the primary.
I have problems with, I have problems with government telling me what I can and cannot do. I will tell you that to start with. I have problems with a lot of the zoning stuff too, but I don't feel that I should have to come, if I wanna have an office or rent an office in my building to somebody and it's only one office or two offices, I don't even think I should have to come for a special exception. So I, looking at the scale of use, and the scale of use for the truck terminal also becomes in because a lot that's going on now within the agricultural community is, um, congregating products together, putting them on a truck. So all the farms in the Plumbeth area, let's say, that grow tomatoes and cabbage and lettuce, would bring their products to one farm, and then another truck would come in and pick them up and take them off and deliver them in Manchester and Boston and New York. So putting together that kind of thing and, and a technical point, that becomes a terminal. So that, and that's a big agricultural use now. Uh, the other thing I would suggest you do as far as permitting what happens in agritourism with all the things is, and I should have the statute off the top of my head, but I don't go look at the state statute of what is allowed under the title agritourism, because it is quite a long list of things, some of which hit into this. Theaters, uh, there is zoning if you're doing a, um, having band concerts and all that sort of thing, but having a theater. And we already do kinda have a theater in the ag zone because, uh, the Italian farmhouse has the stage out there and a lot during COVID, they ran movies at that, when they couldn't run The Flying Monkey, they had movies out there, and it's still sitting there. The other thing when it starts. The other thing, when you start talking about truck repairs and so forth, I repair a lot of my vehicles at the farm, yes, or my vehicles, but if it ain't broken, it ain't farm equipment, you know. Let's see, what did I have? Private club, retail sales, doing retail sales, agriturism, we got truck terminal. And we also do have constructs in the ag zone, which is, so, and, and once upon a time, the area that I'm in down there was designated in the master plan as the industrial area of Plymouth. So that's, and I don't know how that's changed, I assume it's changed over the years, but that was where, if we were going to have any industrial work in Plymouth, that's where it was going to go. So, and the other thing, and the last thing to kind of be aware of as you're doing some of these changes, it comes to the same thing that zoning tends to be, it's a taking of my property, because you have drastically eliminated if, if I just decided I didn't want to farm anymore, and I had somebody come in and offer me a million dollars for my property. You've eliminated the ability for me to do that, and I do have, I have been offered a lot of money for the gravel that's on my property. And it is still a open gravel pit and has been since I was about that big, when I used to collect 10 cents a truckload and dump it in my grandmother's jar. And the guys came in, three guys came in in a truck, half an hour later they drove out and they loaded the truck all with shovels. So that was years ago.
I've got a couple of comments, and I would, I would encourage everyone who's concerned about these to actually go through the use table in our zoning ordinance, and if you need help finding it or something, say it over Joseph.
13, 14.
And see what works and doesn't work, and, and why. And we'll talk, we'll continue this, well, right now, but also obviously in a month. And the more feedback we can get about specifically each of these, like, why each of these does and doesn't work is important to hear. And, and we as a planning board really have to weigh allowing those agricultural uses, even when they sometimes don't look agricultural, but at the same time weighing the concerns of many townspeople who are concerned that the zoning ordinance, as it's currently written, does not protect them as they would like it to. And we somehow have to weigh these two things against one another.
The other, while, while you're weighing, the other thing, and I'll go to the hotel that was turned out. First of all, that's a beautiful piece of hay property, but you can't get anybody to hay it, I guess. Is that true? Did you get somebody to hay it? It hadn't been hayed when I went out there, it was that tall, so I was.
So it hated, didn't it?
If you get somebody to hay it, that's fine. I'd, I'd love to see it continue to hay, but my, my other concern, which you couldn't deal with, and it comes back to the 25 with the house, the 25% with the tall building and so forth, is that was a piece of property, they were going to put up a tall building, a hotel, but you didn't know what they were going to do with the rest of it. And that's the same thing that will happen if you allow on, if you, if you sell them 200 acres, and they put a big building up on 25 acres, and then divide off the other 25 acres and put up another tall building.
It is different, actually. It is different.
Yeah.
Do, can I, can I?
I, I, I do want to remind everyone, it is currently 10 to 10.
Yeah.
I just, I thought about that as I was going.
I personally don't mind going a little bit over, but I do want to keep conversation really focused if we do decide to do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a public comment?
All right, Claire McCann, Plymouth, Hampshire. Really support all the changes you're making. I think my one thing would be maybe we need to divide what theaters mean if we're going to be dividing the definitions of things in the future, just because I think a movie theater is very different than a community theater, so perhaps that could use a look at as well for those purposes. My other comment would be, if you're a landowner in this community, you are a part of this community, in my opinion, and I think you should see yourself and your actions as affecting the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's late. Do we want to briefly discuss the map?
On the map, on the map.
That map, yes.
And also beyond this map, potentially.
And potentially beyond that map, as we've been discussing as well.
I think we need to discuss the map. That way there can, the, the ag zone can review one meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we have to go later, we should vote to do it.
Okay. Fair enough.
We can do it quick, even better.
So I would propose, at the very least, we open up a corridor along Tenny Mountain Highway to, basically includes all the stuff on the other side of Tenny Mountain Highway, and I'm not sure how wide that goes. I know a few years ago, there was a proposal to go all the way to the river, which, the nice thing about that is it prevents split lots.
Prevents what?
Split lots. So one lot would have, would have two different zones.
I could also see reasons not to go that far, but it does raise the whole issue then of split lots and which you, zone do you follow, and I know there are rules for it, but it confuses people, and. Phil?
No, I was, I'm actually looking for the rule on split lots, only because, do you remember the name, the number, Joseph?
It's 30, ah, no, it is, there's two sections that deal with lots in multiple zones, that's what, that's what the section is called.
Section 406, page 21 is one of them.
Perfect, yep. So, yeah, generally, it's, if your lot has frontage in two zones, you're subjected to the more restricted zone. If your lot has frontage in one zone, you're generally restricted, you're generally able to use that zone up to 100 feet into the area of the other zone, broadly speaking, but like I said, it's pretty.
So where that comes into play is that a lot of these lots have frontage on Tenny Mountain Highway, and they back up to the river.
Yes.
Which means they only have frontage in one zone.
Yep.
So.
So one of the nice things there is, I mean, a lot of this is available anyway.
Yeah.
Because of like flood, floodplains and all that kind of stuff. However, if you do make a line that does not go all the way to the river, it somewhat protects a bit of a corridor as ag zone.
Yeah.
Along the river from being completely developed, which is, would be hard to do anyway, but it gives you a little bit of extra insurance on that. So I could imagine the line that's currently there on the other side of the road just being extended. And then if we want to extend it further onto beyond the rotary there, we can talk about that.
Are you saying to the west?
To the north.
Well, originally I was talking to the east.
Yeah.
But if we also want to go west, as you were saying earlier.
I would think that we would probably want to pick an arbitrary, a, a, a measurement that includes all of the land within a certain number of feet to the north of Tenny Mountain Highway and divide, define an eastward boundary of the Baker River. Where it crosses under Tenny Mountain Highway on the right side of this.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I would say take it all the way west to the, to the Rumney Town Line on the north side.
Following the river, the contour of the river.
So it's going, let's say, whatever the number is, 200, 300 feet.
Yep.
Entirely from the, from the Baker.
Where it crosses.
All the way back to Rumney.
Yep.
So not used, not used side of Tenny River. What's that?
That's like a quarter mile past the intersection there.
Yeah, it's not very far.
Near the rotary.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is.
What about the opposite side of the rotary?
On the south, on the south side. Yeah, I think that's another discussion. I was, so that's, that's an initial offering.
So can you describe that again? So east to where the Baker crosses, under the Tenny Mountain Highway.
And, and I don't even, I, I kind of need to scale it off, honestly.
I'm uncomfortable with going all the way to the river.
So I'm not going, yeah, I don't like, I don't like the concept of going all the way to the river, but effectively, anything we do there is going to be, if we say it's 200 feet, then it's going to be 300 feet, because none of those lots have frontage in another zone.
Neil?
I think we need to have a meeting with a conservation commission.
Yeah, we can do that.
Before we make any changes on the, along the Baker River.
Well, here's the, I, I don't disagree necessarily. I will say that if we make these changes, we're really not allowing any more than is already allowed there in the ag zone itself. Although, from a good planning perspective going forward, it is good to err on the side of caution, because it, all this stuff that's in the ICD, most, I don't know, most of it you can already do in the ag zone.
It overlaps.
Except that we're.
So we really wouldn't be adding uses for the most part, although we would be drawing a line which goes forward and.
Right.
What do you mean about south?
I mean, we couldn't just make it as far as, we basically have currently already developed on that side to the, to the Baker, no?
Are, are you talking about, like, going down 3A?
After the town, after the traffic circle down 3A, correct?
Oh, then you're going that way now.
I think Matt, I, I think Brad, this, Brad, this is what you were talking about, too, is like coming down this way.
Yeah, that side, I'm not quite sure.
That side, okay.
And I'm, I know there's been talk about stuff going in there, and I didn't really, I like, I heard something about National Guard wanted to put a place there at one time, that was a real.
Honestly, I would, I would be fine taking the ICD down that way. I originally was thinking it would be better to make it highway commercial, but there are only two uses between the highway commercial and the ICD. One is childcare centers, where they're permitted in the highway commercial, they're special exception in ICD. The other one is warehouses, where warehouses are a special, special exception in the highway commercial, but they're permitted in the ICD. So, I mean, if we, if we brought the ICD down Mayhew Turnpike.
So if I may for a second, I got two, two things here. A, I suspect we're at least going to go a couple of minutes over. Maybe we want to make a motion to just go over.
I make a motion to continue the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I was going to say, to err on the side of caution, before we expand the ICD too much and make perhaps some of ourselves and some members of the public nervous about expanding commercial development too far, incrementally, maybe we could stop at the rotary.
At the rotary.
For now.
Yeah.
And we could see how we, how that sits with us.
Well.
And we could always return to a broader change later.
Do we want to just?
Rather than saying.
Do we want to just leave the south side of, of Tenny Mountain Highway as is and just propose a change to the north side, then?
I think it might be, you know, a lot of big changes too fast can be.
Yeah, I agree. I'm okay with that.
And so maybe if we just expand to the north side with that similar corridor that's already over there, that might be a good chunk for now. Let it sit in the future, see how it feels with us, and then maybe we can talk about expanding it further west.
I'm okay with that. Can I, can I come back and throw a number? I had given an arbitrary distance.
Okay.
I'm going to say, why don't we, why don't we define the ICD as 300 feet to the north of the existing Tenny Mountain Highway center line.
Which would allow you to actually apply that, like, 500 feet.
So it, it would go further for any of those lots that don't have frontage on another road in a different zone.
How many feet?
300 feet. To the north of Tenny Mountain Highway.
I still think we need to meet with the conservation commission.
I, I think we should invite them to the next meeting, but I think we should move forward with this and, and ask them for input.
I don't think we should agree on any number.
Okay. I mean, my only, I, I partially agree with this. My, my only reticence to agreeing with this is everything we're proposing there is already allowed anyway.
And, and anything that would be proposed there still has to comply with the Shoreland Protection Act, which is, which has setbacks from the river that have to be observed in that entire zone.
And at least for now, the ESE as well.
Right. Although I think, yeah, I don't think that's necessary with the Shoreland Protection Act, but.
But it is in place right now.
Right, it is.
So I have a question. How would changing the zone to some of these agricultural fields affect the tax assessment?
If they didn't change the use, it wouldn't change.
If it's still in current use, it shouldn't affect it.
No, no. If it, no, they can stay in current use regardless of the zone.
But if it's not in current use, I wonder how changing the zone affects.
It might increase the value.
Yeah, value?
The taxes they may have to pay.
As I understand it, they really.
Taxes until the use changes.
That's what, that's kind of what I'm asking.
Just as a note, the ICD already extends 300 feet north of Tenny Mountain Highway.
Thank you.
In certain areas.
No, primary, well, yes, so from Smith Bridge Road down to the house after Fugakis, if it's still a house there. So just to give you an idea, approximately, judged by GIS.
So that was my guess.
That's.
I said 3A.
Yeah.
I just went.
Yeah. So that's 300 feet.
So we're going to continue that 300 feet to the east.
And do we also want to go as far as the circle?
To the west.
Or?
East and the west.
East and west.
How far west did you say?
Uh, my, my proposal was to continue 300 feet to the north of Route 25 all the way to the Rumney Town Line.
I think I might make people, I mean, that bothers me less than 3A, I think, which could be a little bit disconcerting to some people.
Yeah.
Because of the type of development that's currently there.
Yeah.
But if we go to the Rumney Town Line, or even just, just to the roundabout, Rotary, whatever that is, odd sort of intersection. I mean, I'm just trying to make this not too much for people to swallow all at once.
I mean, if, if you're, if you're concerned about that, you could just go a little bit further than, than where we are now and stop it at the meet, at the other place where it hits the Baker River just north of Yeton Road.
Like Yeton Road.
Because.
It would only be a couple extra lots that aren't really developable anyway.
In correction, it runs, where it currently runs to is where Claybrook passes right before the childcare center.
Yeah.
That's like the last.
So it would basically, I mean, if you go past that, it would just be the childcare center, basically.
Could we take it as far as the lot that was proposed as a campground at some point?
That'd be like the, two lots over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about, but it's fine.
There's, there's a house there, and one of them, right?
It's right across.
What's his, what was his name? I forgot his name now.
Joe Carter.
Carter, yeah.
Carter.
So.
Oh, is that his wife's place? Is that, is that?
It's right across from Yeton Road.
So.
Ah, okay.
If we're going to go.
You know where Hawkinson Sandy lives?
If we were going to expand it west on the north end, should we expand it on the south end to separate Mary, Mary, um, schoolteacher's property versus.
Nelson.
Mary Nelson with the, I forget the name of the applicant who came in with all those units.
Six of her storage.
As well as, as well as Three Lakes, which is not included in it.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's Three Lakes, it's not included.
No, it looks like they are.
No, actually, that's, that's that parcel that we have pending, we just denied their application.
It's in the ICD unit.
Three Lakes is included, the four acre lot on the corner of Yeton Road.
That's that little orange line.
Where they're proposing that commercial building.
Squiggle line is the brook.
The little mini, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't, yeah. I mean, part of the reason I was proposing to go out to Rumney was just because it's, I think sometimes it's better to be arbitrary and remove the question of special treatment. Like, did you go to that boundary because you know who owns that or like, you know, I think if we just take that three hundred feet straight west all the way to the Rumney Town Line, then it absolves any questions of preferential treatment for any particular landowners. And, you know, we're we're basically creating that standard that, you know, from the on the eastern boundary of of the Baker River, it's going to be three hundred feet north of Route twenty-five all the way out to Rumney.
That's already commercial anyway with like-
No, but I mean, there's but there's there-
I just don't go on three A then, just only go-
I mean, it gets out to Baker Valley Floors and Edge of Town Tavern, like there are there are-
No, no, that's already is commercial there.
Right, there is commercial there and there are a couple of houses, but like it doesn't, I mean, ICD-
Just don't go, I wouldn't go on three A at this point.
Right, no, I I would say I'm going to propose that we continue it west past the circle all the way to the Rumney Town Line just three hundred feet north of Route twenty-five.
That works for me.
Sure.
It's it's easier to define if you explain to people and, you know, you you don't create the question of why you stopped it at a particular point.
And if we have second thoughts, we can think about it for a month.
Yep.
And come back.
So and keep in mind that, you know, lots in two districts are treated as the lot that they have frontage in. So, I mean, functionally, those entire lots almost become all ICD if they go to the river, right?
As as I understand it, yes, so they would have that, they'd be subject to not the one where the lot has frontage in both zones. Well-
So anything that has frontage on that backs up to Smith Bridge would have two zones, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they if it's frontage is in both zones, subjected generally to the more restricted.
Right, so so here's my concern, like that that lot that we had the proposal for the hotel on, let's say three if three hundred feet, it looks like it's further back than Smith Bridge Road, the front three hundred feet of that becomes ICD, then that whole lot becomes ICD.
That is concerning.
Because there's no frontage on any other road.
Yeah, it's concerning.
But that's a bycatch of of what we're doing here and I don't think I don't I would like to exempt that and keep that in agriculture, but, you know, it the the same thing as as the veterinarians parcel. He's got all those agricultural or he's got all those sports fields.
Can we use Smith Bridge Road as a boundary for the zone?
Say, would you just run that, use that as a boundary with that naked?
So extending-
Got to be careful too of-
Spot zoning.
Well, and Riverside Landing is further east than that, which has Market Basket, the liquor store, so we do want to-
Right, but that's all one parcel, isn't it? Or has has that been subdivided?
Oh, it's a mix, but yeah, the that was just if you were to cut off that boundary at Smith Bridge Road.
We definitely will bring that all into default.
So the the problem is that even if you bring, so that lot gets captured, even if you bring the line of Smith Bridge Road over to the right and you don't go back three hundred feet, you're still creating a lot, the frontage on on Tenny Mountain Highway creates the ICD.
Can we just draw the line?
Can you think creatively about this, Joseph, and maybe come up with some kind of-
I think you're better off to just pick three hundred feet and let bygones be bygones, even if that whole lot becomes ICD. It's unfortunate, but-
I and so the when the boundary line divides a lot, at the time such line is adopted, the regulations of the less restricted part of such lot shall not extend more than thirty feet, one hundred feet in rural districts into the more restricted part, provided the lot has frontage on a street in the less restricted zone.
But it doesn't have a street, if it doesn't have frontage in the less restricted zone, then it's the whole thing, isn't it?
But it would have frontage on Smith Bridge Road potentially, right?
Only, well, if we're defining it as three hundred feet, maybe not.
I think you should table this.
Okay.
My brain's stopping.
So is mine. I'm getting very quiet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And does anybody have any comments about any of this before, I don't think it's getting late for all of us? Yes?
Regina Ronaldo, owner of Longview Farm. I know there are lots of other people who do farming activities in, you know, various ways. But as far as like working farm, like farm that really brings people to their place, I'd say probably one of the only farms in Plymouth that's really doing that. Like, there's not another vegetable farm that I really know of. I'm not, I'm not saying this to disregard other farming types of farming. Obviously, I'm pro farming. And I'd love to see more of our beautiful land along the Baker River protected, you know, whether it's through changes in zoning or through conservation efforts, whatever it may be. And and if that does support more like people actually interested in farming, that would be amazing. I honestly don't necessarily see that, like I don't see like young people coming to this area. There's not the cash flow to buy property to start a farm. But if we're looking to just sort of preserve land and the way it the way it is, I, you know, I'm not really sure what I'm saying, but, you know, if we want to keep the land the way it is, this is a a direction and I do see, yes, restricting some of the the uses on the land as a positive direction. I don't see any of the the boxes that were checked today restricting anything that I might want to do on my farmland, honestly. Fuel, restaurant, we have a food truck at our farm, you know, that, you know, there's there's lots that we can still do if those boxes were restricted, just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public about things not related to our agenda? All right.
Can I just say thank you to the members of the public that contributed tonight?
You can and you should.
It's very important that that I'm really happy that we got your input, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's really helpful for us to get your input.
I'll be back, I'll be back.
Thank you, Omar.
Thank you for being more on top of this, my brain is going to mush at this point, I think. Thank you all, motions, anybody?
I can I just make one comment?
Move to Jared.
It's going to be quick. I just want to compliment the people that have built up the last chair. They've done a great job, the building looks nice. It's one of the applications that I saw through in the very beginning that has actually done something, did what he said he was going to do. And my hat's off to them, they've done a great job.
Let the record show.
My motion's on the table, if anybody wants to second my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close.